Welcome to the March 14, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of course its fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much, City Clerk.
Mayor, if I could, before you get into your agenda, staff would like to make an agenda adjustment to move item 11B, which is titled Urban Tree Canopy Assessment, to immediately after your minutes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Can I have a motion to do so? Or, Member Nelson?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? We move that in the agenda. Before I do that, can I get a motion? May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting of 6:30 PM, January 24, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and second. All those in favor? Opposed? Minutes are accepted. We move to 11B.
On to 11B. This item was presented to city council at their 28th February 2023 5:30 Presentations Meeting. The city was awarded $17,000 through the Florida Forestry Service to conduct an urban tree canopy assessment. The consultant Planet Geo LLC conducted assessment and provided the city a report with recommendations. The results of this analysis can be used to develop a continued strategy to protect and expand the Titusville's urban forestry. The reports, recommendations are in your packet and staff is recommending that you accept the findings and recommendations of the urban tree canopy assessment conducted by Planet Geo and consider staff's proposed strategies.
Thank you very much, counsel. Anything you want to, anybody want to comment on the summary? Member Stokoe?
Yeah, just a question for clarification. I noticed that the TEC had recommendations and staff said they believe it's beyond the scope of the grant. Is that in terms of the amount that we're getting for the grant? Is it in terms of our staffing?
The scope was very limited on what was supposed to be provided. Basically, what this is, is a monitoring tool and nothing more. We did ask the applicant or the consultant to provide some general recommendations of what they think we should do with this report in the future. So the first step or the first deliverable was to be an assessment. And then the second deliverable was supposed to be that report. So they did their analysis and then provided that in a report. We presented that to you. The TEC's recommendations were very specific. They talked about ground truthing, looking at soils and stormwater analyses, and we believe that that was beyond the scope of this grant. And again, and like you said, it was a very small grant.
Yeah, typically, my experience with grants are you have, if you get the grant, you have to meet the criteria for it. You can't go beyond what they're giving you the money for.
Right, the scope was attached to the agreement with the agency that we received the grant from, and so that's what we had to go by. Now, of course, any recommendations beyond that, we can certainly address. That might be more specific.
Potentially for the future with different funding. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson?
Well, that was what I was going to ask. I really like the idea of doing some shading over our paths, our bike paths, and maybe doing it in cooperation with a nonprofit, maybe keep referred beautiful, and maybe looking for a grant that allows us to do that. So that would be my hope for the future.
Yeah, I would tend to lean that way as well. Whatever this is outside the scope of, and I don't always understand exactly what the scope is, and that sometimes we have to decipher that. Whatever it is or whatever it is, and I would like to think that we could possibly do some things with private sector, volunteer groups, KBB, and certainly seek from staff and TEC in the direction we go. So that being said, any other comments from counsel? All right, call the cards, please.
Lori Lee Thompson.
Yeah.
She's pretty quick.
Thank, thanks, George.
Quick up.
Um, Lori Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. And the TEC, we've been working on this for over a year now, and we like this plan. We hope you will approve it. The recommendations that we made, we'd made those, you know, I know that they were mentioned in recommendation number two, they're alluded to or implied, some of them. We felt like these six points were so important that they needed to be standalone recommendations. You know, so yes, some of it is alluded to, I'm sorry, implied in number two, but the one I have the problem with is number two. Staff recommends updating the tree assessment every five years. Well, at the rate of development that's going on in our community, if we did a tree assessment every five years, we would lose a lot of trees. So I think that, you know, two years is more reasonable. And I know that the staff doesn't want to spend the money on the software, but we got free access to the software for the first year. Three months has already gone by, but we still have access to it, and I think we should use it and decide if we do indeed want to use it, you know? And I mean, this is so important that if the city can't come up with $5,000 annually to have good software so that we can keep trees in our city, I will write the check, okay? So you don't have an excuse. I think that's about it. I just plead with you, please, please, please pass this plan. You know, it lays the groundwork for what we should have been doing all along, you know? Our land development regulations state that if we're going to be a tree city, then we have to have a committee that oversees the trees. And you appointed the TEC to do that, but we haven't really been real proactive. This is the opportunity to give us a chance to have a plan so that we can really do the best job that we can possibly do to ensure that Titusville is one of the best tree cities in the United States. We have a lot of trees now. We need to keep some of them around. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from counsel? No? All right, good, thank you. I wanted to get them before you sat down. I said I wanted to make sure anybody had a comment, you got it before you sat down. Next card, please.
Kay Seong.
I understand we're at item 11B, the urban tree canopy assessment, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The urban tree canopy assessment was funded by a $17,000 grant from the U.S. Forestry Service Urban Forestry Grant Program. That urban forestry grant program makes these funds available to committees, communities to develop their urban forestry program. That makes sense. The urban forestry grant program makes these funds available to communities to develop an urban forestry program. Both the city's regulations and the Tree City USA require a community or urban forest program to plant and maintain trees along streets, in parks, and in public areas. The Forest Service indicates, quote, "An urban tree canopy assessment serves as a baseline for setting tree canopy goals and measuring progress. A UTC assessment can take a community beyond simple tree canopy targets to strategic-focused planting that aligns with other critical social, environmental, and economic goals." So we need tree planting and we need an urban forestry program. Staff's recommendation number one, to include urban forestry in the comprehensive plan amendment, is fine, but does not meet the expectation of the Forest Service Grant Program, which provides the $17,000 grant to develop an urban forestry program with a canopy goal with strategic planting. That addresses social, environmental, and economic goals. Staff's recommendation number two for a tree giveaway program is a good first step, but is not an urban forestry program. That's what the grant money is for, to develop an urban forestry program. The final January 11 concept plan, which will be given to you tonight, the agenda has an old concept plan that was not recommended by TEC. You have, will be given a hard copy tonight of the January 11th concept plan, and I provided it to you via email. It provides the groundwork for an urban forestry program based upon the expectations of the Urban Forestry Grant Program. This concept plan calls upon the city to use the assessment's canopy data as a baseline for setting a tree canopy goal and measuring progress. The concept plan provides for strategic-focused planting that aligns with social, environmental, economic goals per the U.S. Forestry. The concept plan identifies census blocks with low tree coverage and low tree equity scores to prioritize street tree planting to expand canopy. The plan includes a street tree giveaway program and application for Forestry Service Street Tree Inventory Grant. Adopt the assessment and follow the consultant's recommendations to promote an urban forestry program, set canopy goals, and prioritize canopy expansion by adopting an urban forestry program. Can I have 30 seconds?
Yes, go ahead.
TEC's January 11th concept plan meets all the grant program's expectations as well as city's LDRs and Tree City USA's requirements for an urban or community forest program. So please adopt and follow the consultant's recommendations for the assessment and adopt the concept plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Mary Sparr.
Good evening, Mary Sparr Coco, and I'm speaking for Sierra Club tonight.
Thank you.
Sierra Club asks you to accept the urban tree canopy assessment from Planet Geo. We believe that Planet Geo, using Earth Defined Tree Map, is the best available data. It uses multi-spectral imagery with a resolution of 60 centimeters. The main data source it used is generally updated every two years. So two years is as soon as we can get this high-resolution data to allow comparison with previous assessments. We know the data used in the canopy assessment was from 2021, and rapid development in Titusville is reducing the canopy. The next data collection from really high-resolution source is anticipated this year. This brings us to staff's proposed strategies regarding Planet Geo's recommendation. The first three strategies are good first steps, and staff acknowledges that they blend with several TEC recommendations. The fourth Planet Geo recommendation is to use tree plotter software to identify planting areas and monitor the canopy cover. Now, the Planet Geo software package provides updates every time new high-resolution data is available, in other words, every two years. However, it costs $12,000 for three years. Staff recommends updating the canopy assessment in five years with a Forest Service grant. TEC recommends more frequent mapping to allow monitoring if there is rapid development. Sierra Club strongly recommends, strongly recommends, not making a decision on Planet Geo tree plotter software tonight. There are complexities that need detailed study, such as getting the best deal for your money, figuring out how to best use tree plotter software to save the staff time instead of taking up staff time, and making sure your next canopy assessment can be directly compared to the one you are considering tonight. Please accept the canopy assessments and recommendations, one through three, along with staff proposed strategies for these recommendations, but then postpone a decision on recommendation four, purchasing the tree plotter software. It can wait. It can wait because the city already has a free trial of this tree plotter software, which should run through January 20 of next year. The saying haste makes waste definitely applies to recommendation four of one more sentence. The way you could approach this is to first have TEC study this matter in detail and provide you with their conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Michael Mijack.
Michael Mijack, Beachwood Court. It's good to see you. The assessment was relatively inexpensive, and the more I think about it, it comes across more as advertising their product rather than doing an accurate assessment. We have a statement in my field of computer science and AI, the garbage in is garbage out. Well, when you look at their assessment, 60 some odd percent of what they're including is plantable tree canopy is the St. John's Wetlands to our west. That's really not a functional part of the city. They also included not only a two-year-old assessment, but over 2,000 acres, I'm sure it's probably closer to 3,500 now, that have already been mowed down, but were not included because of the age of the imagery. They include, for example, the 1,200 acres west of 95 and 407. I forget the name of the development. It changes names every year. So Tranquility Bay is another one that's going away. You know, these are all large developments, hundreds of acres here, there, and they're not being counted in this long-duration photographic imagery. So that was my first problem. The second problem I had was their choice of how they wanted to go about doing the plantings. And the reason that we start talking about soil types is because certain trees like certain types of soil and certain trees don't. And no matter how much you try to make something grow where it doesn't want to, you're going to have a problem. Foxtail palms, for example, don't really like it up here. We have trouble with the other palms, the Sylvester palms, back the new ones at the Winn-Dixie parking lot, three of them have already died. It looks like they have this bronzing disease. You know, so we're not doing things the way we need to be doing it here. And this particular assessment is one that leans toward, oh, we're doing a good job, we've got more green space than we think we have, but I'm telling you, the data's not correct. And if the data's not correct from the beginning and how they manipulate it and show it, you're not going to get an accurate output. I think the original assessment we had of 37.5% tree canopy is pretty close to where we are. The 42 is exaggerated, and it's using trees that we don't have anymore. So we have to really think about the data. When you go to accept this, the reason that the TEC put these additional criteria on there was because these were the faults that we noted with this assessment, and we want to make sure they get corrected going forward. I also have a problem with the process and how we didn't get recorded, our minutes were shy, and you didn't get the report that we produced on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next card, please.
Tom Perez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue, Titusville. I'd like to endorse the others who have commented and certainly reduce what I have to say. At the rate of development, the tree canopy will fall, continue to fall further behind. In the last two years, the development that has occurred has surely reduced canopy, however, it is not reflected in the numbers since they are from two years ago. Therefore, TEC certainly recommends that city council needs to take seriously the predicament of the continued degradation of our environment. We need to be more aggressive to protect our trees by adopting the more aggressive recommendations put forward by the TEC, something that we, or at least I have, recommended in the past. If you see us doing something, you can do it better, do it better because we're certainly trying to meet the needs of the citizens, you know, and in a balanced way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next card.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan always gets to be last.
Stan Johnston, what you heard from us from, some of these members are from the TEC, and I like what Mr. Perez just said. Oh, I'm Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue, and I did some, I've done some development plans in the city. What Mr. Perez says strikes home very much because I'm looking at a project right now that y'all don't want to see. It's SNJ Oaks, and I used to own the two acres of the three-acre park property. So a few months ago, it was covered at least by 75% trees. It's called Elizabeth Oaks or SNJ Oaks. They took everything down except, I think it's one or two trees. That's it. And they call it SNJ Oaks, Elizabeth Oaks. What they did is they went before the boards like DRC and Adjustment Board, and they got all these variances, squeezed more and more out of the property, took out, shortened the front set box. I don't see any, for example, right now, I don't see any landscape buffer between the south property line. Don't see any, any at all. I don't know how they got that, but they've got all kinds of variances about that, and so it's, it was just total destruction. Well, except for that, maybe that one or two trees. Unbelievable. I don't know how you can do it. But so what I'm bringing that to your attention because I see some good side effects of this tree canopy, and that is, is the side effects are going to exemplify just what I just shared with you, Mr. Perez was talking about, is we are going destruction of the trees. I mean, it's complete destruction of some plants, and SNJ Oaks is one example of it, horrible example. So I think that if you don't pass this, is that I think that each one of you, except for Mr. Diesel, each one of you should, if you don't pass it, you should, you should spend 15 minutes in a timeout chair tonight. Mr. Diesel, 20 minutes for you.
I was trying to figure that out, but go ahead. I'm never know.
No, it's serious. It's serious because you need to think about it, and you should have a timeout chair. And that timeout chair at my house is about worn out right now from having grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
20 minutes.
Yeah. Any other cards? Yeah, I'll go from there. Let's hear what the council has to say. Member Nelson?
I was going to make a motion. I still like to see potentially a tree assessment, maybe a little bit more than one every five years, maybe one every three, four years even. And I'd also, like I said, I'd like to see us look at partnering with groups and planting trees in our parks, on our paths, especially on our bike path. That's miserably hot, as the city manager well knows, and I tried it one day and it's miserable. It's miserable, especially in August with not a tree in sight.
Yes.
So I would like to see us do that. But other than that, I'll make a motion if you.
Well, hold a second. Let's bounce around a little bit. I took some notes as this was going on, and one of them was the same as you said, I'm not sure of a tree assessment every five years, especially with the rapid change that is happening in our community. I'm not sure that's adequate. Again, I'm not the expert on that, but it just seems like five years might just be a little too long. That's one thing I'd written down. Have some other questions, but first I'm going to go to Vice Mayor.
Yes, I too think that the five-year span is too long. I am, I am very concerned. Every time I go to Coco, I go down to Merritt Island, I pass those communities right there to the, to the right as you go in south, and I look at all of these beautiful homes, and there are no trees seemingly that are, and it looks like a nuclear bomb went off and it just killed all of the trees and, and that is, and that's not happening in Titusville to that extent, but I think that we need to do some things. This is an opportunity for us to guard against that happening in our. This is an opportunity for us to guard against that, that happening in our area with that and with all of the future development. We want to continue to grow and, and I think that we need to keep a little greater eyeball on it than, than is called for, for here. And I am concerned that Mike mentioned that the data is wrong and if that is, if there's any truth to that, in the process of proposing this, we will need to inquire into what that difference is.
Member Cole?
Yes, I too agree that five years is probably too long with the development that we have going on in the city. So I'm, you know, I don't have an arbitrary number of two or three years. I think the TEC recommended two. I don't, the cost of these assessments, Scott, no? I don't know, but I still think it's worthwhile to do it every two or three years rather than every five years.
Member Stokel, you're thinking?
I mean, I'm just going to say I agree. I think we're all on the same page here, it sounds like, so.
Can I make one comment?
Please, please.
So our experience with this grant, and as was mentioned, there's different types of categories of the grant with the U.S. Forester Service. And one is to do a tree, use the money for tree planting, one to do a tree management plan or an education program. We selected one, one of the four, which was to do an assessment, just to find out where we are today. And that's what this is, is a first step to find out where is our canopy officially? Our experience with this grant, we had to do a match and we did that with staff time. That was in-kind contribution. We spent quite a bit of time with a lot of staff members on a regular basis, every week or every couple of weeks, assessing what the consultant was doing. So it wasn't just the consultant working on this for $17,000, there was also $17,000 of staff time involved with this. So to do this every couple of years, it will include additional staff time as well. I just want to make that point to you.
And that's your, your point and your concern and come budget time, it's always, it's always a concern. But I would also say that we're at a very unique time in our development. And I'm not saying necessarily that if things slow way down and nothing's happening around here 10 years from now, maybe it doesn't have to be every two or three years, maybe five years is fine. But it does seem like things change way too fast right now to think that five years is adequate. And that's just me speaking as a non-expert. Anybody else from council? Member Stokel?
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point. I think we do need to, as we are going into the budget process, thinking about how much growth we're having if we do need to expand staffing, because I feel like that's happening with other projects as well. It does, anytime we choose to kind of have advisability or look into something, it is staff time and we have limited staff. I think we're still short-staffed. I mean, we don't have a new CRA director still, we're down a planner. So I feel like we need to, during budget time, really focus in on that with our growth.
Any other comments from council? Member Nelson, you want to?
Mayor, could I say something first?
Staff, yes.
As I see this, we have the assessment and then you have recommendations. So I'd suggest if we have a motion of council is whether to accept the assessment, but also then to discuss these recommendations. For example, staff does not recommend using the tree plotter, and I would agree, that's not something you want to just have, purchase something as part of this assessment. We would need to evaluate that and look at that. So as you discuss and make your motion, I would think we would look at the assessment, but then address the recommendations as well. So we're very clear on what council wants us to do with accepting the assessment and how we want to handle the various recommendations.
Okay.
All right, Member Nelson, take a shot at that.
Move to accept the findings, recommendations of the urban tree canopy assessment conducted by Planet Geo with the recommendations that we assess the tree plotter, but not buy into it right now, that we look at increasing our, the timing of our assessments to every two or three years, and that we look at planning and maybe some funding toward that planning and partnering with community groups, nonprofit, Keeper of Our Beautiful Rotary, those kind of groups to do some plantings to provide shade over some of our paths and inner burgs, et cetera. Does that work? Does that work, Richard?
That was a good effort.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
I think what we've done is we've accepted the assessment and we want, we have, I don't use the word concerns, but we feel like there's some unfinished business that we need to continue to work on. Would you agree? Vice Mayor?
I would just.
Okay, so we have moved to, you're going to have to guide me now.
Yes, sir, we're back now to Agenda Item 5A, which is a proclamation for the Irish-American Heritage Month of March 2023. Mayor will present the proclamation and I'll go ahead and read it with your permission.
Real quick, this everybody understands, we jumped that into a different place and so now we're going back to where the beginning of the meeting normally would be. So in case you're like, what are we doing now? So, all right, give me one second here. I just got lost as well. Okay. City Manager?
Official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida, whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 natives of Ireland had immigrated to the colonies that would become the United States. And whereas in 1792, Irish-born James Holman provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of the Capitol Building. Whereas Irish-born Commodore John Barry was recognized by the United States Congress in September 2002 as the first flag officer of the United States Navy. And whereas Commodore Barry fought the last sea battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida. And whereas the Irish first came to the Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. Whereas three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were Irish military officers. Whereas Father Richard Arthur, an Irish-born priest from Limerick, was appointed the parish priest for St. Augustine and judge of La Florida established the first public school in America and opened both to boys and girls of all races. And whereas Andreas Jackson, whose family came from the county of Atrim, served as Florida's military government, governor, following the acquisition by the United States. And whereas Irish Floridians can look back on the pride and the legacy of their Irish forbears, who have contributed significantly to the American education, business, sports, leisure, science, engineering, medicine, science, and the arts. Therefore, I, Daniel E. Diesel, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Titusville, Florida, do proclaim the month of March as Irish-American Heritage Month. Signed, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to you guys. Can you tell which one's Irish here? You good? Want to say a word?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Diesel, distinguished members of the council. Irish-American Heritage Month is something that we've celebrated for a long time. In Brevard County alone, for the past 33 years, minus one year, we've had an annual parade on St. Patrick's Day. You had mentioned Commodore Barry. A lot of people don't realize that we have a monument to Commodore Barry down in the Port Canaveral State Park. Sits right there, has a beautiful view, kind of reminds us of all the history of where we came from. So on behalf of the Irish-Americans in Brevard County, thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys. And as we know, nobody puts on a better party than the Irish, so we'll see you there. City Manager?
Onto Item 6A, which is the North Brevard County Hospital District Board. The North Brevard County Hospital District Board Semi-Annual Report will be presented by Mr. Billy Speck and team is here and I think you're the flipper and Billy's the presenter. Thank you, Natalie. Yep.
Hello, sir, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Diesel, members of City Council. I am Billy Speck, member of the Parish Medical Center Board of Directors. There's a few other board members here, I want to point them out. Behind me is Maureen Ruth. Hi, Maureen.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Wow.
And Herman Cole up here on the chain.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. I'm also pleased to be accompanied by Parish Leadership VP Natalie Sellers and CEO George McCarion here.
Thank you, guys.
It is my honor to present Parish Medical Center's Semi-Annual Report. A written report has been provided that summarizes the outcomes achieved by Parish Medical Center since our last report. My presentation this evening will highlight select announcements, awards, recognitions, community involvement, new providers added to our medical staff, and an example of Parish Medical Center's mission in action. First, we're pleased to welcome Lester Elhake as a member of the executive team. Picture of him here, PMC's Chief Financial Officer. Lester has 25 years of financial leadership experience and is a welcome addition to the Parish Healthcare family. Parish Healthcare is the integrated healthcare system created by PMC and has again earned certification for integrated care by the Joint Commission, the premier healthcare accrediting body in America. Parish Healthcare first earned this accreditation in 2016. We were the first and only in the nation to be certified for integrated care then and we are still the only to earn this prestigious recognition. Additionally, the World Health Organization and UNICEF has designated Parish Health Medical Center as baby-friendly. The baby-friendly designation means that Parish Medical Center adheres to the highest standards of care for breastfeeding mothers and their babies. We are also very proud of our hospitalist program, which recently earned recognition as Hospital Program of the Month, a distinguished distinction, excuse me, earned by only one hospital program monthly for some 50 programs nationwide. And our very own Dr. Kevitt Patel, who's pictured here, who serves as Parish, Parish's Hospitalist Program Director and Medical Director of Parish Medical Group, was recognized as Hospitalist of the Month. Congratulations to Dr. Patel and the entire hospitalist program team. In addition to these awards and recognitions, Parish Healthcare is very active throughout the community. This is something that I've seen in my 20 years here in the, in the, in the city. And I'm certainly proud to be associated with the amount of community involvement that they, they do all the time. Every, each community outreach event and program is focused on addressing the health needs and priorities as identified from the recent Community Health Needs Assessment. In January alone, nearly 3,000 community members participated and benefited from one of dozens of Parish Healthcare-sponsored outreach programs. Among those events, the annual Martin Luther King Celebration at Isaac Campbell Park in partnership with Boys to Men with Purpose, the annual Space Race benefiting United Way, Blue Origin Safety Day, which was attended by 1,400 Blue Origin employees. And our care teams were there to provide education and health screenings. Diabetes education was identified by many of the community, many in our community as a priority. Very few resources are available to people with diabetes. The Decoding Diabetes Program is led by certified diabetes specialists and is a free program offered monthly. Another program that we take great pride in is our athletic training program. The value and importance of having professional athletic trainers at the sidelines was brought to the forefront in recent, recent national news. When a player has a medical emergency, they can make, they can make the difference between life or death. Parish Healthcare has athletic trainers at four of our high schools, Astronaut High School, Titusville High School, Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, and Cocoa High School. In addition to being on the field on game days, our trainers, together with Parish Medical Group's orthopedics and sports medicine physicians, also provide sports physicals annually to include ECG heart screenings in partnership with who we play for. Of note, the money that they collect during the sports physicals is 100% donated right back to the various schools' athletic programs. I certainly and the entire Board of Directors are very proud of all the ways Parish Healthcare gives back through the many outreach programs and services. Also making a positive difference are the new providers that continue to be recruited and welcomed to our community. And there is a list on the screen. Since our last report, we have welcomed an additional eight providers to the medical staff. Their medical specialties include primary care, pediatric psychiatry, general surgery, thoracic surgery, pain management, oncology, and cardiology. Most recently, we welcomed General Surgeon Dr. Peng Yu, who is certified in advanced trauma life support and specializes in minimally invasive surgical techniques. We also welcomed internationally renowned Harvard-trained thoracic surgeon Dr. Dennis Tishko, who specializes in lung cancer treatment. We are excited that these world-class physicians have chosen our community. Last but not cer, certainly not least, I'd like to share with you an example of Parish's help, healing mission in action. Each week, the care partners of Parish Healthcare share stories of how their mission, which is healing experiences for all the ti, for everyone all the time, is being fulfilled. This recent story is a perfect example of what makes our Parish Medical Center and Parish Health so special. This story was shared by a PMC ICU-registered nurse, Caroline Anthony, and Susan has given permission to share and her photo with you. Caroline writes, "Susan came to the ICU before Christmas. Since her admission, care partners have witnessed her strength, positive attitude, sense of humor, and overall resiliency. I have dedicated my time with Susan to care for her medically, but also to learn about the person she is. I felt, I feel a bond with her, with her and her family. I know them by name, what they like to do for fun, the movies they watch, and the vacations they had planned. I ask Susan at the beginning of every shift, what can we do to make today a good one? I imagine how it would feel to look at ceiling tiles in a hospital room for months. Susan was losing the twinkle in her eyes. She no longer did her little dance of enthusiasm, a bed wiggle. When her favorite people entered the room, instead she began to close her eyes, the only way a bed-bound person can shut the door. She told her sister she wasn't getting any better. She wasn't sleeping, she was sinking into a deep depression. I had to do something. I believed in her and began planning how to get her outdoors. We know that access to nature and outdoors is healing." Susan was too weak to sit in a wheelchair and had a wound vac, making it more complicated to get her out. We needed to find a way to get an ICU bed outside. Upon getting all the appropriate approvals, we set our plan in motion. The 45 minutes it took to prepare for the trip felt like wrapping Christmas presents. How Supervisor David Copley, two students, Lisa and Susan, and I made our way downstairs and out the doors. We stood in the sunshine, letting Susan take in the world that was still on its axis when hers was not. I felt overcome by emotion watching my patient, who had become my friend, enjoy the things I took for granted, wind, sun, clouds, trees, birds singing. I felt restored in a way I hadn't felt since before COVID. We were acknowledging Susan's human spirit and in turn, our own. Susan slept peacefully the rest of the day. I fulfilled a promise to my friend Susan with the help of my amazing coworkers. We don't always get the outcomes we hope for in healthcare, but we can always treat one another with compassionate empathy. As it turns out, what we did for Susan actually did more for us." This concludes my report. I would like to invite Parish Healthcare President/CEO George McCarion to the podium to provide you with some additional information. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and distinguished members of City Council. I am George McCarterian, President and CEO of Parish Healthcare. I want to thank you again for the invitation tonight for us to give our semi-annual report. And I want to thank Mr. Billy Speck, the newest member of our Board of Directors, for giving you tonight's report. I have notebooks for all of you, and I don't know the proper protocol to pass those out, as well as for the two gentlemen here.
Very good.
If we could do that now, if you'd like to.
Just come. We can normally go to the clerk.
Is that okay?
And then hand it back this way.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
It's not that controversial.
I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to address a very disturbing email that most of you recently received, full of lies and fabrications, comments made by someone who was far off course from reality and the truth. "Dr. Craig Diligdisch continues to make unfounded accusations about Parish Medical Center, our Board of Directors, our attorneys, and our executives. We have done nothing wrong, and we, in court, continue to prove our innocence." He continues his antics in greed-oriented tactics for one sole purpose: to force us to settle with him financially. His comments get further and further from reality, certainly sad indeed. The vast majority of his emails, similar to the one that most of you have recently received, include statements such as, in parentheses, "This communication is intended for settlement purposes." You'll also notice in his emails, he often uses the term, in my opinion, to attempt to remove himself from legal liability. He obviously values his own opinion very highly, even though he's been consistently proven to be wrong. In his most recent email, he requests that you, City Council, expend your resources investigating his wild goose chases and unfounded accusations. Then, his plan will be to submit a public records request and obtain that information free of charge. His accusations are always wild stretches of fabrications of issues that he creates in his own mind to cause someone or an entity to overreact and pay him money. We have and will always refuse to do that. Why? Because we're innocent. He's obviously having difficulty dealing with that reality. As an example of his lies, he states that PMC is prohibited from investing in for-profit companies, while he simply doesn't understand our enabling legislation, which allows our side-by-side entity, the North Brevard Medical Support Corporation, to do exactly that. He also states that we are not allowed to operate outside of our tax district without, again, understanding our enabling legislation that allows us to do just that, as long as we don't issue taxes on the citizens within our district, which proudly we haven't done for over 25 years, something that we are obviously proud of. But again, he ignores or perhaps can't comprehend that reality. He doesn't actually understand our enabling legislation, because if he did, such facts would get in his way of trying to extort money from us. And it might make him feel bad for being wrong so many times. Another example is that he states that we have violated state laws under what is known as Florida's low-income pool for reimbursement, even though the transaction was, in itself, approved by the state of Florida. He accuses us of being the reason why there no longer are radiation therapy services in North Brevard, even though he and he alone is the reason why his radiation therapy program was evicted from our building because he didn't pay us rent for over one year. The court has determined that he was in breach of his lease agreement. The amount of that rent, once all of it is collected from him, will exceed $1 million that he refused to pay to your public hospital. And by the way, his radiation therapy program was using equipment on patients while he was under investigation by the Florida Bureau of Radiation for multiple violations related to that very same equipment in that program. Sad that a so-called professional finds it necessary to blame others for his own mistakes. The notebooks distributed to you tonight include just a dozen examples of his long list of embarrassments and defeats related to his many accusations. These 12 examples are included because all of the information contained in them are public documents. To highlight just a few, example number one, are the results of an independent investigation by a label law firm finding him guilty of the harassment of one of our female managers in multiple violations of our code of behavior. Yet, he has yet to apologize to this lady. Example two is a copy of a temporary no-contact restraining order for stalking or non-consensual sexual conduct entered against him by a North Carolina judge. Example number three is information related to a formal complaint by his own previous radiation safety company to the Bureau of Radiation in Florida that he and his company were treating cancer patients without a radiation safety officer, no medical physicist, no dosimeterist, and no radiation safety committee. In fact, he had this equipment dismantled and removed from the premises before the conclusion of the state investigation. Example four, a copy of the final judgment in our successful eviction of him from our building, in which he was required by the court to pay us over $600,000, and we await the remainder of the monies. Example number seven in your book, whereby we caught his staff, under his direction, misrepresenting Parish Medical Center to the state of Florida in a scheme to obtain over 20,000 vials of COVID vaccines under our license and our state registration for him and his company's own financial gain. Example number nine in your book is a copy of a cease-and-desist letter from the attorney of the Mayo Clinic because he and his company were falsely using the Mayo Clinic name and trademark for his own personal gain. Example number 10 in your book is information from the UCF College of Medicine stripping him of his voluntary faculty appointment because he uses his title of Associate Professor of Medicine, University of Central Florida College of Medicine, in any of his attack emails against PMC, our board members, and our attorneys. Example number 11 is information related to our own medical staff and Board of Directors removing him from the Parish Medical Center medical staff. He is one of just a very small number of physicians in the 65-year history of Parish Medical Center to ever be removed from the medical staff. As you delve into all of this material, you will clearly come to the conclusion that this is a person with no credibility who projects onto others the very things that he claims them to be doing. He certainly sees the world differently than we do. PMC, I, and our Board of Directors will continue to defend our employees, ourselves, and our patients from this person. Thank you for your time tonight. We, as always, remain ready and prepared to be your community healthcare provider. And we apologize for this person consuming your time inappropriately. In the event that you do cross paths with him, feel free to let him know that we stand ready to help him find the healthcare that he needs if and when he chooses to do so. Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council.
Thank you, Mr. McCarterian. Very, very well represented. I don't think there's much more you can say. Again, I appreciate you elaborating on that, and I will leave it at that. And I'm going to digress back to what should be said tonight, and something you shouldn't have had to deal with was that, and I'll leave it at that. I do want to comment like I always do on Parish being the rock for us when it comes to health. And thank goodness, I don't need to necessarily keep talking about 2020 and the COVID years, but you were there for us in a way, and you were our safety blanket, our security blanket, and like I said, our rock. But I can speak to a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. One, when you talk about athletic trainers, I certainly want to comment on that. I don't know that we've talked much about that over the years when you came in and presented, but one specific story, obviously, I'm a Titusville High guy. I mean, that's where I've been. But my son went to Space Coast to coach, and I went and helped him. He's at Cocoa. I'm helping him. Through that, I got to see all the athletic training programs. And at Cocoa High this year, we were, we were playing Palm Bay at home, and we had a severe injury on the far sideline. I couldn't really tell what was going on because I was in the booth on the far side. But as it unwound, Dr. Alata from your staff led the charge, and it turned out to be a very, very, very serious football injury. The young man had broken his femur, and we had femoral artery concerns. And Dr. Alata took control of the situation and led the charge with the EMTs. We had helicopter, he was helicoptered out for trauma. And long story short, you don't know when you're going to need that. And if we had had something like that happen with a femur break, I don't know what else we could say. That aside, I just want to say how much you're a part, not only you're a rock, not only are you, you know, our security blanket, you're part of our family. You're the guys that invite us over to see Santa Claus and invite us over to, you know, see the tree lighting, invite us over for breakfast with Santa, and most importantly, probably of all, invite us over to see your Christmas fireworks, because those are the best in the whole goddamn state. So with that, I want to thank you and Council. Does there anybody want to add to that? Member Cole?
Yes, I'd like to add to it because this is my first opportunity sitting back here listening to it. I have probably given this presentation 20 years, and Bill, you were almost as good as I was.
Bill, I'll talk to you later. I have a different take on that.
But thank you. Thank you so much. And really, a lot of the things that are done at Parish Medical Center, you know, we normally don't toot our horns about things, but there are so many things behind the scene, even the charity events that are supported by Parish. So even as a member of Parish Medical Center Board, but as a, as a City Councilperson, I say thank you and thank you for your efforts.
Member Nelson?
I'm going to say thank you, thank you, thank you. You do so much for our community. And I'm going to say thank you for sending Bill instead of Member Cole. He was a lot shorter. So thank you, Bill.
Member Cole, I thought you were great. Anyway. Last thing I want to say, because it was just this past weekend, and I saw you there Natalie, was the Smile From Within event we just had at Gibson, former NFL, in some cases still active, NFL football player JT Hassel, who played for me. And he brought some of his NFL players with him. And you want to get kids to look at people and say, this is how you're supposed to do it. And I'm so proud of JT, and this couldn't happen without your support, again. But it's a football cheer clinic, but the underlying tone, and when I spoke, that was my whole impact, was mental health and smile from within. And if you can't smile from within, let's find out why. And you don't have football camps like that. And those are the things that people don't realize. That's a Parish event, and I can tell you that, you know, financially and facility-wise, it just didn't, it wouldn't have happened without you. So I was honored to be there and honored to see Parish in full effect. Vice Mayor?
Yes, to the, to the operators, the management staff at Parish, and all of the medical doctors. I thank you for the community of Titusville, the service that you give. And I thank you for the growth that you are continuing to experience because our medical situation, not only in Titusville, is continually to cause problems. And your growth is directly tied to how well we will do and are doing in this process. Thank you so very much.
Anybody else up here? I see none. The bottom line is thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
So Mayor, one of the takeaways is during the budget process, I think we're going to need to allocate some more money to the fireworks. Is that what I heard?
No, no, don't give me any trouble. I just go like, that's their deal. Anyway. That's City Manager.
On to item 6B, which is Planning and Zoning Commission. Accept the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Member Chairperson Jane Spidell with an unexpired term to expire on 31 January 2024 with regrets.
Yeah, I guess I need to, Member Nelson?
At some point, I'll make that motion, but this is a lady who has really put her heart and soul in it. And I hope that in her letter, we express to her her appreciation because she has really gone above and beyond on this. So, yeah, I'm going to leave it at that.
Yep. Obviously, we're very limited where we can go with this. I'll just say this is a, we sadly accept her resignation, and we'll leave it at that. And I will say that I was blessed to get to work with Ms. Spidell at Titusville High School. And she always had the most rambunctious children in her class. And she was always the best personality for them. And she always, or they always knew, she didn't play. So that being said, my hat goes off to her for all she's accomplished in her life. And again, I appreciate her very much. We'll leave it at that. Anybody else want to comment? Any cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I wanted to speak at this item. I'm speaking as a professional engineer, and you're not going to like some things I'm going to say. Is that I believe in compassion, and I've seen some very little compassion at times at P&amp;Z, big time, big time. And back in July of 21, I went to a meeting, and the engineer said, "Well, by golly, these properties over here that have an access to Vacumere Lane, they're landlocked with no access."
Stop the clock. Stan, are we talking about accepting the resignation
Exactly.
of Jane Spidell?
Exactly.
I haven't heard anything about that.
Exactly.
Well, we'll see where you're going.
Okay, all right. So, so this is P&amp;Z meeting, July 2021. So I've been an engineer and a surveyor, and I know that it does have legal access to it, but P&amp;Z also insisted on and so forth. Not only is it by common law, but it's by state statute. I believe it's 740 or 704. I think it's 740. So, so that was used to take a two-way access. And it was approved by P&amp;Z to be eight feet wide. And of course, I went to P&amp;Z and appealed to them, not listen at all, not listen at all to my expertise. City was incredibly wrong about it, and it's going, I'm making an ADA complaint about it. And I've been working on it. So it's been over 18 months, and it still hasn't been resolved. There's a person there who's got emphysema in only one eye, and he's elderly, and he's under care. And by golly, when we have an eight-foot-wide access, where it used to be two feet, I mean, two-way traffic, and limiting it to one-way access, you've got to be nuts. There's no compassion there, I see. And looking at it again and again and again, I just don't see how anybody could possibly do this, what they did. As far as I'm concerned, it's illegal. It's illegal. But I must thank Brad Parish for meeting with me. It was last, this past Monday, past Friday. And so I'm working on it. But Mrs. Spidell was a, she's been an obstacle. I mean, let me give you an example, real quick. On this same project, meltdown for over six months. So that was over six months ago. I made this poster and so forth, the disabled and the elderly. I, I made this poster and so forth, the disabled and the elderly and there, no legal access and so forth, complete nonsense. And it still goes that way. And I even said, we got, we got problems there with, with the survey and so forth. We're trying to work on it 18 months later and it still hadn't been resolved. The survey's bad, engineering's bad, and the access is ridiculous. In fact, is they're not going to even use the?
Thank you.
So anyhow, Mrs. Spidell, I don't regret her leaving.
There you go. Any other cards on that? Member Nelson?
Move to accept the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Member Jane Spidell with an unexpired term that will expire on January 31st, 2024 with deep regret.
And I don't know if we're allowed to write that in the minutes and how that goes, but sadly, your deep regrets. I'd like to see something like that in the, the minutes for this particular one.
Second.
Member Cole?
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Motion sadly passes. City Manager?
Onto item 6C, which is Code Enforcement Special Magistrate Semi-Annual Report, which is included in your packet, no actions required.
Thank you, sir. City Manager?
Onto item 6D, which is the Concept Plan of the Proposed Urban Forestry Program and Arborists. The Titusville Environmental Commission recommended accepting the concept plan of Proposed Urban Forestry Program and recommends hiring a new arborist. At their 12 October 22 TEC regular meeting, a citizen presented the Urban Forestry Concept Plan. The proposed concept plan aims to satisfy the commission's responsibility to administer the plan for the care of preservation, pruning, planting, replacing, removing, and disposing of trees and shrubs in parks along the streets and other public areas. Staff recommends that you, if, if in fact you would like to move forward with this proposal, staff would like the opportunity to analyze and provide cost estimates for the proposed items, including, including the feasibility and cost for an arborist. And Brad's passing out the updated document for you and we'll answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Okay, Member Cole?
City Manager, don't we have either two or three arborists on staff right now?
Apparently, we have three, yes.
Three arborists on staff.
Anything else, Council? Because once we get done, we'll go to cards. Member Stokel?
Is this different than the recommendations they had on item 11B, those six that were listed? Or is it an expansion of those?
From what I understand from the TEC meeting, this was in response to that assessment, this is the plan that they are proposing. So what we gave to you, what I just handed to you was the version that was handed to TEC in the January meeting. We incorrectly attached the wrong version to you at tonight's meeting. So what you have in your hand is the correct version. I'll just point out the changes, the differences. On the first page of that draft plan, you'll see in red, that's the revised language that was approved by TEC. And on the second page, you'll see in red as well, that is also the change. And then on the very last page of the plan, it shows a much more robust description and recommendation about having a dedicated arborist. So this is, I, I understand this to be in response to the assessment, this is a full-fledged plan is what they're trying to propose to you.
So if I'm understanding correctly, they are probably wanting to expand what we currently are doing. They are probably aware that we have three arborists, but they want an additional one focused primarily on urban forestry, the plan itself.
You'll see on that last page of that handout of the report, you'll see number eight and it's got several bullet points there, nine altogether outlining the duties that they are proposing for the urban forestry program and for the arborist to implement that plan and to be, to be dedicated to these items that you see here in the bullet points.
And with these items under number eight, do we currently do any of these with our current arborists?
We do. I mean, our current arborists, for example, we have two arborists in our department, Community Development. They're site inspectors. They do landscape reviews and irrigation reviews as needed as we request them. They do a review of any requests for a tree removal. We do involve them and we have involved them in the past with the tree planting programs. And the previous agenda item about the assessment report, I included a couple of flyers from past programs. They were involved in those. They do coordinate with other departments, including Public Works as needed. And they do help us when needed with the review of landscape plans and tree surveys as part of site development permits. They get involved with us with the Arbor Day events if necessary. They are not liaisons to the Titusville Environmental Commission or any other board, but they do assist us with information when staff, planning staff has, has questions. There are two bullets here about the HOA and guides and rules of canopy preservation for HOAs. We don't have anything like that, but obviously, like any other member of our staff member, they'll answer questions at a public. So again, we don't have an arborist that's dedicated 100% to everything that's listed here, but they are on call when needed and respond to us when we have questions and need their services.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Anything else from Council this time? Call the cards, please.
Lorley Thompson?
Lorley Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. And I hope that you would pass this plan because this is something that, again, the TEC has been working on this for over a year. And as part of our responsibilities for being a Tree City USA, we're supposed to have an urban forestry program. And we've never had one before. And I guess the reason that you ended up with the wrong version in your packet is because we've been working on this for so long. But I believe you were just handed a copy of the, the plan updated that we approved on July 11th at the TEC. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time up here because you know what to do. I mean, we have an assessment, now we need a plan that goes with the assessment. And, and this would, this would fulfill our obligation as a Tree City USA. And I have no problem at all, you know, with staff asking for the opportunity to analyze and, and check the costs and estimates and, and how much it was going to cost and all of that because that's what they're supposed to do anyway. So I'm fine with that. But I'm just asking you, there's been a lot of work done on this plan. It's a good plan for our community and we would like the opportunity to, to, to implement it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lorley. Right here, clear. And next card.
Casey Hunch?
Casey Hunch, Maryland Avenue. At the 5:30 February 28 Council Assessment Presentation Meeting, the mayor said words that still ring in my ears. Just plant, the mayor said. That's just what the January 11 Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program is about, planting trees along streets, along the lagoon and in parks with three projects to launch the program and six more projects to strategically plant trees to address various issues, tree equity, neighborhood revitalization, shoreline stabilization, temperature reduction, stormwater reduction, and more. City Code designates TEC as the tree board responsible for the development and administration of a plan for the care, preservation, and planting of trees and shrubs in parks along streets and in all other public areas. Tree City USA requires a community forestry program. In August 2022, Public Works Kevin Cook indicated if the TEC wants to move forward with an urban forestry program, they should present a concept plan for urban forestry to council for adoption. Mr. Cook said if the plan is adopted, council will direct Public Works to fill in the details and send it to the manager for budgetary consideration. Public Works Director indicated the department would need a designated city arborist to implement the urban forestry program. After much discussion, TEC recommended this January 11 version of the concept plan for an urban forestry program to council for adoption tonight. The Forest Service Grant Program, which granted $17,000 for the assessment provides these funds for communities to develop their urban forestry programs, set tree canopy goals, measure progress, and plant trees strategically for social, environmental, and economic goals. TEC's January 11 Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program recommends a canopy goal and projects to strategically plant to address social, environmental, and economic goals. TEC has followed Mr. Cook's recommendation for designated urban forestry arborists. The other arborists mostly work with the planning department. This program can be funded by the $574,000 Landscape Trust Fund. I have it from the Finance Department, $574,000. That fund accrues monies when developers remove trees and is to be utilized to beautify the city through landscaping of public areas. This $2 per capita annually required by Tree City USA for a community forest program can be maximized to plant trees. Additional grants are called for. The plan launches a tree giveaway program, giving residents the right tree for the right place based upon the width of their right away. Can I have another minute or two?
Another minute? Yes.
Thank you very much. Plant trees in downtown parks to benefit residents and visitors alike. There's a plan that is specifically addresses a concern for Councilwoman Nelson. It plants native palms to shade the exercise trail at Sandpoint Park and stabilize the shoreline to prevent erosion, which has occurred, as has occurred during recent storms. If we had trees, the shoreline would not erode as it has done so badly recently. Community planting projects like Chain of Lakes are included. Keeper of Our Beautiful and other volunteers planted 115 trees in an hour at Chain of Lakes Park. We can do it again. This plan has been presented to many local groups and is endorsed by the Sierra Club, the Marine Resource Council, the League of Women Voters. Indeed, this concept plan is community-driven. Adopt this January 11 Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program and let's do what the mayor said, let's just plant trees. Thank you very much.
Did plant 150 trees pretty darn fast, I must admit. So fast, I barely got there in time to plant one. I'm serious. Next card, please.
Margaret Van Daven?
Good evening, Mayor Diesel and Board Members. Margaret Van Daven, 459 Valerie Drive, Titusville, Florida. The United Nations New Urban Agenda was created in 2017 to promote the development of sustainable cities. What is a sustainable city? The sustainable city, eco-city, or green city is a city designed with consideration for social, economic, environmental impact, and resilient habitat for existing populations. Investing in trees will result in sustainable cities with happier and healthier people. The planting and protecting of trees supports the United Nations Urban Agenda and the development of sustainable cities and stresses the importance of green and quality public spaces as well as green infrastructure. For people to receive their benefits, the urban forest needs to be healthy and diverse to create the most sustainable and livable communities possible. Most people would agree that shade trees are an asset, if only for the cool shade they provide when the summer heat is on. Another obvious asset is their natural beauty. The planting, establishment, and preservation of trees in residential and commercial areas helps to reduce environmental costs related to soil, water, and nutrient runoff that negatively impact our regional water quality and wildlife populations. Established trees help to retain water on-site and recharge our state's aquifer system. According to the National Arbor Day Foundation, trees can be a stimulus to the local economic development by improving the aesthetics of retail areas as well as providing communities with a sense of identity and unique character that attracts new business and boosts year-round tourism. I want to thank the board for our shade structure at the Marina Dog Park. So with, with the idea of shade trees, I would like for you to consider the need for shade trees in Titusville Marina Dog Park, the only dog park in the city. We were fortunate and grateful to have received a grant for a shade structure. However, the structure provides minimal shade and is overcrowded with dogs and visitors seeking relief from the sweltering sun. Shade trees inside the park would provide additional relief and safety from the sun and beautify the dog park with minimal costs and energy. The rewards would be long-lasting and beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Trees are prettier than structures do. They just are. And they, and they blow in the wind. Next card?
Maureen Ruth?
Hi.
Maureen Ruth, 7185 Bright Avenue in Port St. John. I am a board member of the Marine Resource Council and a board member of the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast. Both associations are in support and fully endorse the Urban Forestry Concept Plan. We also recommend a stronger implementation of low-impact development, at least as recommended by the St. John's River Water Management District, to implement LID into individual lots to ensure less surface water runoff, less pollution and erosion, and reduced overall damage to area waterways. Our groups would like to see this passed tonight to make a start on a very worthwhile project. This is a nonpartisan issue and a great step forward for the health and the people and of the planet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next card?
Shifalo, Tropic Street, Titusville. I am so in support of this and so happy that it's finally coming here. I just want to point back that this is news to me that we have three arborists on staff. I knew that we had at least one. And I wanted to point out the fact that, due to the fact that there's so many duties that this particular arborist probably had, that the Wind Dixie Tree Massacre was allowed to happen. I understand that only so many trees were allowed to be taken down and so many more were taken down and that had a proper attention by the arborists been given to that situation, we probably wouldn't have had what turned out to be the Wind Dixie Tree Massacre. And when we had that meeting with Mr. Cook, he did say that they would need an arborist dedicated to work with the Public Works so that the tree planting and the tree maintenance could be properly executed and implemented and execute, I don't want to use the word executed, I'm sorry, I just can't think of another one, to implement, to implement the plan. And therefore, the TEC has come up with the idea that we need a dedicated arborist. Now, if you have to go and hire another one, that's one thing, but maybe since there's three arborists on staff, one could be dedicated to the, to the urban forest because that is a regulation that you have an arborist with this program. And so I, I urge you to really consider the fact that we need, this isn't just, this isn't just a, a thing that we've come up with on the tree team that, oh, we want a dedicated arborist to the, to the tree situation. It's, it's kind of a requirement and is necessary to keep things moving along in a proper perspective because an arborist who's on the planning committee, which is understaffed, I realize that we're totally understaffed, and they're going to have so many things to do that are going to be distractions that aren't going to keep them focused on really perfecting the urban forest program that we want to implement. We've been saying we're doing this and we're not. We need to start doing what we say we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Mary Spaar.
Once again, I'm speaking for Sierra Club. Sierra Club enthusiastically supports the Mark- Sierra Club enthusiastically supports the March eleventh version of the Urban Forestry Concept Plan. We are grateful to the city of Titusville for taking the lead on tree issues. Approval of the Urban Forestry Concept Plan is the next step forward. I'd like to emphasize that the concept plan is a living document. It contains many wonderful ideas for how to proceed with the Urban Forestry Initiative. It is not, is not, set in stone, and it's meant to be added to or changed as the city starts implementing the plan. If one part of the concept plan is not working out, you can modify it. If you think of a really great new project, add it to the concept plan. The object is to start implementing some of the ideas and keep up the momentum. Staffs come in as wants the opportunity to analyze costs and provide estimates for action items in the plan, and also for the arborist position, of course. Providing cost estimates is essential for responsible government. Cost estimates keep the city on budget. We suggest that the cost of your individual action projects be evaluated separately to facilitate implementation of parts of the Urban Forestry Program as soon as possible. You don't have to provide cost estimate for every single item now, just the ones you choose as starter projects. In conclusion, Sierra Clubs, thank you so much for considering the concept plan. We hope to see some of the projects and actions implemented in the near future.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Michael Mijak. And then the last card is Stan Johnston.
Clean up.
Michael Mijak, Beechwood Court. A concept plan, that's all this is, a broad brush stroke, a bunch of ideas that we've laid down. You know, I spent my career in systems engineering, and what we're looking at is really engineering with nature. And in systems engineering, you deal with systems of systems. For example, we have a stormwater system, right? So, my phone's going off. Figures timing.
Perfect timing, I sat there the whole time.
I even had it on silent, too. Back to focus. The concept plan is a broad brush, and it's not the actual plan, which is really what we need to get down to brass tacks when we start talking about financing, what we can and can't do, what we should and shouldn't do. But in general, this was the outlook that we had in mind, because we need to start working with the stormwater systems, our tree canopy coverage, where we want that, how we want that, and how we're going to maintain it and manage it and water it and feed it and grow it. Now, they recommend two dollars per capita. That's a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's a budget item. We want to grow a forest, an urban forest, and manage it, we need some money. So, that's what this is partly about. We know that we need an arborist involved, whether it's full-time, part-time, depends how much time, right? How many hours we put into it. What matters is that we do it and that we make the step forward. We have to start somewhere, and the concept plan is just that first step. That's the beginning of our longest journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Last card.
Stan Johnston.
Now, we're talking about money and time and so forth. Please understand, as what you can see, is there's some people who are putting in their time, free time, like the TEC and some other people, on trying to protect the trees. It's a lot of work, what they've already done. And what we have just seen tonight is the passage of eleven B, and that has to do with the urban tree canopy. Do you remember what Mr. Parishwood said to you? Remember what he said when you passed it, before you passed it? He said, "It's going to be something on staff, it's going to be extra on staff." Didn't he say that? The answer is yes. So, there's already been, it sounds like from Mr. Cook, too, says, "This concept plan needs to be staffed." So, it looks like to me is that, what did... Was it Kate that said five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we've got for the... with the development and so forth, taking down trees, five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars? That's a lot of money right there. So, it looks like to me is that there will be no raising taxes for this issue, and the city just did what we do for the fire department. Remember what we did? We got four new fire fighters. So, I'm just saying it's understandable is that this appears to me, it's no military increase. It's a need, and staff supports it. So, I would like you to consider, I mean, I'm really glad that you all didn't have to spend time tonight in that timeout chair. Twenty minutes would have been a long time for Dan Diesel, because he's got other things to do, don't you, Dan?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, I'm going to let you go, and I'm just letting you know is that there's a lot of people that are putting in time and it, free time, to do this. So, and you'll get, what you would benefit is that you will get more free time from a lot of people that are trying to make this work. So, people are trying to, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. No more cards, right? All right, council, I'm sure there's some discussion and some input, I've got notes everywhere. Member Nelson?
I like the concept plan. I don't think it's something we can do tonight. I think it's something that staff needs to look at, put into the comprehensive plan, and then figure out what we can do. We're already doing, we're already having the books to do, start doing the streets with trees, and that should be happening. Scott, do you remember when?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't hear you.
The tree boxes, the tree boxes on the streets. Kevin probably knows.
Yes, that's probably six to nine months out, because we, with the DEP grants coming online, we're waiting on the grant agreements for those to finalize, and that has set the stage for all those in the Sierra and outside.
Okay. So, we started on this anyway. A tree giveaway project, I mean, that's a matter of seeing if we can get a grant, seeing what we have, doing some plantings. I think we've indicated that we're interested in planting trees in parks and in pathways. So, for the most part, I think this is very doable. Stabilizing the shoreline, we did that last spring, planting mangroves, and our mayor is really good with a shovel.
Not that good.
But, you know, there's no reason we can't do some of these things. So, I'd like to see us do it. I'd like to see it as part of the comp plan.
Thank you. Member Nelson, I kind of follow where you're at. I would say to anybody out there that I don't think you're going to find anybody up here that says, "No, we don't want trees, we don't need any more trees." And I go back to when I said, I think that what was, "Plant trees," right? Plant trees. I agree, I stand by that. I think that I'm all for smart growth, but part of smart growth is planting trees. I really do, I believe that. I like some of the things that were said out there. He left me, or he's gone or somewhere, but I like what Mike said. It's a concept plan. It's a broad brush plan. And I like what Laura Lee said, "I have no problem with staff assessing the plan." I think the bottom line is, you know, with this plan and with what staff's thinking, "I don't think we have to do this, I don't want to do that, I don't want to do that, I'd kind of like to do something in here, and let's get something productive, because it's hot and we need shade." I mean, that's not the only reason, but that's part of the reason. So, I'm all for planting trees, I'm all for, again, what Mike said, you know, it's a concept plan, it's a broad brush plan, staff assessment of the plan. But we need to move forward with a plan.
Can I add?
Yeah, please.
And trees at the dog park.
Again, I'm sorry?
Trees at the dog park.
Trees at the dog park, trees at the walking place in Sandpoint Park. Yeah, trees everywhere. Member Stokoe?
Yeah, question for Brad. Since we did just approve the assessment tonight, would the next step be for us to look into a plan from like the procedures of how, what would happen next after approving the assessment?
Well, I could give you a summary of our discussion when we started this whole exercise to figure out what we were supposed to be doing, because remember that several years ago, based on the tree ordinance, there was discussion and agreement that we should probably just figure out what exactly is our canopy. So, we reached out to Tampa, and if you remember, some of our staff and members of the public went to Tampa to go meet with their staff, figure out how they implement their tree ordinance. One of the things that we learned from them and from the University of Florida Vipas staff, even as recently as last year, was that the first thing you should do is just find out where you are today, and that's what we did with the assessment. And then the next thing you want to do is talk to your community and do a community meetings or engagement, whatever that might be, to figure out what you want to prioritize. So, I think what the TEC has probably made, they've tried to make that attempt here, whether you believe that's acceptable, or do you want to evaluate what they've done, or do you want to bring it back to the community to get more of a, more input on this prior to any kind of action on it? But that's basically the recommendation that we got from Tampa and the University of Florida, is how to handle this.
So, was, I guess then the next step from staff's point of view was to kind of get the community involved, see what they're saying, and then come up with a plan that prioritizes some of these items? And I ask that because I think, to the mayor's point, I think we want to see a marrying of the two, because I think the TEC did a lot of hard work on this, and when I'm looking at it, I feel like we are doing some of these things, and then some of them, I'm like, I kind of would want to focus more so on the canopy, more so than events, but like, I still think that's important. But I think to your point, it would be nice to include the community to see how they prioritize, and then when we're thinking about budget and staff time, what is the number one priority and kind of working our way down? So, I agree, I would like to see some type of plan incorporating these things as we move forward, and it sounds like staff kind of are headed that direction anyway.
Yeah, one thing I want to make you aware of, one, there's a statement in here about already establishing a canopy goal. So, when we spoke with the University of Florida about that, they suggested that's a community decision, that's not based on a standard defined or best practice, you can't, there isn't a special, specific goal or canopy percentage that is appropriate for any particular city or community. It's really up to the community to determine that. So, that's why they were recommending that your next action is to really engage with the community to find out where their priorities are, and then make your decisions based on that, whether that's through a robust plan that's presented tonight, or something more limited, or something more expansive, it's up to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I heard what Brad said is, it, this is, it's great, but it's, we have to consider that all of the things that we do up here is a community decision, and when the, we have a group that is doing a wonderful job, this is great, but everything that has been mentioned has some drawbacks. Staff shortages. How long is it going to take to get it accomplished? Was it the man-hours? They seem to have gotten the financial part of it kind of mentioned to us in all of the writings that has been said. But when you begin to look at what staff does every day, and yes, they want one dedicated person to do this particular task, and that has to be evaluated within itself. How can that be done? What rules are to govern this particular person? Is staff going to govern that person and tell them what to do, or is TEC going to tell that person what to do? That's a big issue when you put all of this together and making sure that we got baffle boxes in the right place. Who's going to govern that person? Is Kevin going to be the person to say, "Okay, you go out and you take care of what part of..." It's a wonderful thing, but the implementation of this is going to be a hard task, because everything has to be taken into consideration. Staffing, one, see if we got a person to do it. Who's going to supervise that individual, and how is that individual going to fit into the overall plans of the city as a whole? And with this, yes, we can take this and evaluate it in comparison with the concept plan that the city is proposing, that is put to us, but it's going to, this is a long time to implement this tonight, and for me, is an impossibility, because it has to be evaluated on a lot, a number of steps that we have, that hasn't been considered in this process. Manpower, do we have, how long, how far are we behind on certain projects that we already have in place? How long did it take for us to come up with an acceptable tree ordinance? You think that was hard? Then how long, and how many cities along Bivard County have a tree ordinance? How many cities, incorporating all of this into our plan? Yes, it should be evaluated, like what TEC, ETC, TEC said, that evaluated compared to our, but that's going to take a lot of time. That takes staff's time alone to evaluate this. So, to implement it into the plan today, I think that it, we should give direction and advisement to the staff to, hey, look at this, but we have to be very careful on the time constraints that we put on the staff for evaluating it, because it's not like they're sitting around their desks with their, twiddling their thumbs, I think I better say it that way, twiddling their thumbs every day. But this is wonderful, it's got a great, great potential, but there's costs involved, we know that we have some money, but it's not just the dollars and cents that we have to be concerned about, it is the public opinion, what does the public want, and staffing, how are we going to get this implemented? Who is that staff, where is that staff person going to work? Who's going to give them the direction on what to get accomplished, what's going to take priority, and all of that has to be laid out in a plan before we can come back to make the decision whether to incorporate this as a whole. My thoughts.
Okay. And I think that goes back to what I said, and quite honestly, it starts off with, and Mike, you left when I pointed it out, that I thought your words were good when you used the term, "It's a concept plan, it's a broad brush plan." Certainly, to me, that says we will need some refinement, but I think there's a plan here that a lot of time and effort and some really good thoughts are in here that I want to make sure don't go away, but I also understand when we toss it over to staff, I get it, Brad, you, I mean, you're up to here, I get that. But at the same time, for my opportunity here is to say, "Staff assessment," I don't know how quick that can be, I don't know how many, you know, hundreds of people you need to go hire to get caught up, but I am saying that I would like this to move forward with a staff assessment. This is not a possibility of coming in here right now and saying, I even heard some discussion on, and some different opinions out there, on the arborist discussion. Some people weren't aware that we have three arborists. Someone had a good idea, I thought, "Well, maybe we don't have to add another arborist, maybe we take one that's already in," I don't know. But these are things that have to be assessed, and we're not ready to, you know, move right forward with this, but I think that this is something that, concept plan, broad brush plan, a lot of good stuff in the plan, but we need to get it pared down and assessed. So, that's where I'm at. I want it to move forward, and I want it to have a serious assessment, but I get the timeframe could be an issue because of personnel. Go ahead.
I agree.
I agree with you, but Sarah brought up a point, and Brad, about a community meeting and getting community input. And when I thought about it, I thought, one, that sort of slows the process down and it actually increases the amount of work. But on the other hand, we might get some people in here who, from different groups, who are willing to help us with this plan. So we might find some ready, willing, able volunteers as a result. So maybe having the community input in there is a good idea.
I think what I'd like to do before we get to that kind of stage is, is take what they've done and what certainly staff has done and let staff assess where they compare, get, give something more instead of coming with no real plan and say, hey, guys, what do you want? Let's give them something to look at whenever that comes down, and that may be down the road a bit. But certainly, and I, I'm not sure if you're saying meeting or whatever, but certainly community input on something as far as, um, you know, trees and, uh, that sort of thing. Go ahead. All right, uh, anybody else? And if not, uh, counsel direction? You guys are counsel.
We don't need a motion, it's just Brad, sort of, I've.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna need a motion to tell us what you'd like for us.
Where I'm at is, again, I keep going back to it when it was set out there, it made so much sense to me. Concept plan, broad brush, and then, uh, Laura Lee had noted, no problem with staff assessing it. But I think we need to, to move forward on it and, and assess it and get back with each other. Again, I, I don't, I hope this can be a we thing, not a me thing. And I hope, as I used to say all the time, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, that together, we can make a difference. And in this case, it would be with trees and canopy.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
You want me to try it, or is Sarah gonna try it?
You did good last time.
Oh, yeah, okay, move to, uh, have the, have staff look at the proposed.
Assess, maybe.
Assessment. And come up with, back with information on what, what can be done regarding that assessment by, with the assessment. That doesn't make sense.
This is, the assessment was, is the report from, that you already acted on. We're talking about the urban forestry plan proposed by T E C.
So if you assess the urban forestry plan and come back to us.
As, as recommended by staff here in, in the agenda? So we're just gonna look at the, our resources and impact and what our needs will be in order to implement what's proposed.
Yeah, that would be a real important factor as we go. I just want to make sure that we take a look at their plan and assess what, what you guys think.
Second, with discussion.
Discussion?
I just, just to clarify, what I'm anticipating is staff looking at the plan that T E C is proposing, seeing what seems feasible, what we can do, what costs would be, and what their proposed next steps would be. If it includes a community conversation, proposing, I think, to what Member Nelson was saying, like, this is what we've come up with as staff and members of T E C, community conversation around that, and then present a final product, is what I'm anticipating.
So you want us to bring this back to T E C before it comes back to you?
No, I'm not, no, I think this is good. I think, though, you were saying that typically the best practice would be to have some type of community survey, some type, so we have T E C's recommendation, we have community input, and then staff would say, this is what seems feasible from T E C, this is what we heard from the citizens, and then this is our plan. And then we would have discussion, I think, as counsel on that, public comment as well, and hopefully have a good, solid plan moving forward.
So we'll assess it and we'll also, and you're asking for some input or recommendations from us as to how to go forward next?
I, I'm as, I'm assuming so because after the assessment, I would think that there's going to be some type of next steps. We won't just have an assessment and it just sits on the shelf. I'm sure, I think to your point, you were saying there would be some type of community input would be a next step.
Okay.
That would be an assessment to me and a move forward. Again, I would own an assessment and sit on the shelf, I want an assessment and say, what's the next step? There, there you go. Are we good?
My question was, we are alluding to the fact that we need community involvement. Are we talking about a public meeting where we'll get input from the publics, from the public?
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you also come back to us and let us know, uh, the number of hours that it's going to take to do this assessment that you're doing?
I, I think your direction is just to do it. Come back to you.
You keep paralysis with analysis, trying to figure out how long it's gonna take, get going and see what you got.
What we can do is propose to you, uh, strategies on how to engage with the community. It doesn't necessarily have to be a meeting separately.
That's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna clarify when you say meeting. He, he said, public input, and I heard the word survey in there, I heard the word meeting. We, let, let them assess that and see what they most need. All right, um, I, did I have a motion? Got a motion, I had a second, uh, let's roll call vote that one.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
There we go, moving forward. City Manager.
Onto item, uh, six E, which is, uh, Titusville Environmental Commission recommendations relating to wetlands. And, um, staff, uh, what, what staff is asking for is your direction regarding T E C's recommendations for council to consider the amendments to the city's regulations to wetlands, which are listed in your packet. Uh, I'm not going to read the summary of that. But what staff would like to do is, we recommend, um, approving T E C suggested changes in the code, but instead, let T E C's concern be addressed during the, uh, part of the comprehensive plan amendment relating to the environmental policies. So in other words, we'll take a look at their suggestions and then as part of the comprehensive plan, amendment to the environment tools, policies, we'll, we'll make those adjustments.
So take, take their input and, and, and as valid and move it towards comprehensive plan?
Analyze, yes, sir.
Analyze, yeah. Member Stokoe.
So just to clarify, so instead of it being an ordinance, it would be in the comp plan? Okay, and then when is our next, um, comp plan, when would that potentially take place to add it to the comp plan?
We, we have a standing, um, advisability from you to go forward with, um, reevaluating policy, goals, objectives, and policies related to environmental statements inside our comprehensive plan right now. That was a direction you gave us last year as part of trying to find policies you like out of that draft 2040 plan and incorporate it into our current plan. Uh, we've got Canyon Associates from, and with Kimberly Horn, working on the first three amendments, land use, future, um, transportation, housing. But there's a fourth amendment that's outstanding right now that we still need to work on and start, and that's looking at environmental policies. So we're recommending that the T E C's recommendations that have been brought to you tonight, as far as changing the code and other interpretations, that that should be just part of that discussion, as part of looking at our comprehensive plan policies. And then with any comp plan amendment, then you look at to see how do you implement it? And that could be code changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment from counsel? All right, call the cards, please.
Michael Mijak?
Michael Mijak, Beechwood Court. I agree that we need to update the comprehensive plan and then modify our ordinances accordingly. Because that's where our strength comes from, what we want goes in the plan. So I'm with you on that.
Thank you.
Mary Spar?
Mary Spar, Coco. Um, I attended the T E C meeting in January where a T E C member suggested, um, putting clarification of the wetland policies on the next T E C agenda. Well, I was pretty surprised and thought it was a really good idea. But, so I waited for the agenda and the next meeting and it was actually on it, so, um, there was, but there was little information, so I thought, well, okay, I'll just make a chart, identify some points of confusion and suggest some clarification. And so, as you can see, there's two approaches to clearing up the points of confusion about the wetlands. You can either clarify the ordinance, which would be the fastest way, um, but more of a Band-Aid approach, or you can, uh, clarify the comprehensive plan, which is definitely the best way. But at the same time, um, it's, I, um, I didn't think staff would be able to do this in a timely manner. And now we know that it's, they're going to be able to do that. So, um, anyway, just, T E C, um, looked at the chart and decided to make some, um, recommendations to clear up the confusion. Now, staff commented, uh, the T E C recommendations in your agenda report. Quote, "The staff believes that T E C's concern can be addressed as part of the comp plan amendment related to environmental policies." "The updated comp plan policies can then be implemented with amendments to the code." This is the best way and I enthusiastically support it. But at the time, we didn't know that was possible. Your T E C is a great group of citizens who care deeply about Titusville's environment. And you're very lucky to have such a wonderful environmental commission. The members are really interested in wetlands, in preserving the natural function of wetlands. So I asked you to direct staff to keep the T E C apprised of the progress on updating the comprehensive plan language in the, and the first step i- i- in, in my opinion is not the, um, in, the, um, conservation element. It is the future land use element, um, policies regarding conservation land use. And, and that's, uh, a portion which the consultant is working on. Anyway, um, T, keeping the T E C informed can start at their meeting tomorrow. Staff, can I, I have one more sentence again, one more sentence, please. Staff can report on the plan to update the comp plan. And hopefully can report that council wants T E C included in the loop.
Thank you. Next card.
Stan Johnston.
Uh, Stan Johnston, I'll, I'll just confess, I'm not an expert on this. I, I read, read what's in the, uh, agenda packet and so forth, and, and I was relying heavily on what Mr. Mijak was gonna say. So I'll sit down, thank you.
Thank you, next card.
Tony Shifalo is the last card.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. I recently got my hands on the, uh, City of Titusville Comprehensive Plan, what a dream book. A dream book. Because we don't follow what we're saying we want to do, what we're planning to do, uh, very often. So, um, my only statement about this, um, regarding the wetlands, we've got to save them. We've got to stop developers from being allowed to fill them in and build on them, thus flooding all their neighbors, uh, and changing all the topography. So whether it's in the code or whether it's in the comprehensive plan, we need to address, uh, the conservation of our wetlands. And, uh, there was a plan that was floated here not too long ago about a chain of wetlands. And there was a map that was presented to you. And I would suggest that somehow we address, I found, policy 1.3.4, "The city shall develop a citywide park and greenway plan to link Greenway, Trails and Park System," and I would interject, "wetlands, within the city and link them to regional trails, other state parks, and conservation areas." I think that would comprehensively cover wetlands. And I think that we could use, um, our plans, our comprehensive plans to actually preserve and make something that would be truly wonderful in the city. Imagine a chain of wetlands that went from the north to the south and was all connected, just like a bike trail or like U S one or something like that. So please consider listening to your advisory boards. The T E C is putting in a lot of time and effort. I go to those meetings too, I would suggest maybe you check their, um, oh, there are no videos, I'm sorry. But anyway, I suggest that you check them out because they're making great studied recommendations that will help in our natural ecology around here, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add to that, it's hard, you know, you can go and sit down, but it's hard for me not to respond to that. I can't tell you, I, I can't speak for everybody else, but, uh, I, I, I listen greatly to our boards, especially, this particular board's very active, a P N Z. But, uh, in this case, I hope it's pretty obvious that, uh, there's a lot of time I'm getting the, sometimes you have information, you're not quite sure about things and you need a bridge. Well, these, these folks are kind of the bridge. And then staff, let me make it clear, you're also a part of the bridge. But, uh, listen greatly to, uh, T E C on a regular basis, um, I do. Member Nelson, you want to say something on that or no? Okay.
You want to motion?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I am, uh, I, over the last couple of meetings, I, I, my concern about the wetlands has grown. And, uh, and they always have been, and bordering, but, and, but I, I, I do, um, follow of the staff, uh, recommendation and, and, uh, and address the concerns of the T E C as they have stated in it. But, uh, the wetlands, how we treat the wetlands going forward is extremely important. It is extremely, extremely important. And, uh, and that's, that's, uh, that's something within our control. And, uh, let us do our best. My, uh, my gift to the staff in speech is just give great consideration as you go forth to do what you need to do to, uh, what the T E C has said.
Um, Member Nelson, you would motion that up?
I can. Move to request staff to address T E C's concerns as far as the comp plan amendment relating to environmental policies.
I'll second.
And, and, um, staff, just to make sure we're on the same page here. T E C suggested changes of code, instead, the T E C's concerns can be addressed as part of the comprehensive plan amendment related to environmental policies, which is the base of where we need to start with all this anyway, so. Okay, good, so I have a motion from Member Nelson. Second from Vice Mayor, roll call. Oh, Herman, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
All right, let me, let me say it again. From Herman, Member Herman. All right, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Vice Mayor? Yes?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not telling you how to vote, yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. It is, okay. I think we were, um, with that, just because I need to, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess. I'll be right back. We are on petitions and requests from the public. If you are a petition and request from the public person, I know I have a couple who are prepared, so let's go ahead and start petitions and requests from the public. Well, give yourself a second here. Okay, go ahead, young ladies. Thank you.
Do we need to wait for Joe Lynn?
No, we're gonna get started without her.
My name's Connie Milton, Windover Farms. I just wanted to talk in general and point out some things on L D R's section 28-54 use table. I just passed out something, I printed out, it's the use table.
Right.
It's actually all the columns that are in the use table today. I did add one new column, which is the very first column. That's for me to put letter, uh, numbers in there so that you can follow my discussion. Now, the first half of this first page is another topic that we'll talk about later tonight.
Good.
The second half of this first page and all the other pages is what I kind of want to talk about right now. I apologize ahead of time for putting it all in the same document, but this is the way it is. Um, the, this use table as published is sorted alphabetically. If you look in your L D R section table, it's alphabetically by the first letter of each row. It doesn't make any sense, really. It's just alphabetically sorted. But I have included here, that I just printed out, is a resort of that table. So it's sorted now by uses or by the con- situations or the construction or the development of the property. It's not sorted alphabetically, it's sorted by like uses. Like, okay, so it, it's a different view. Now, the rows, I, I did delete a lot of the rows that are not even pertinent to this discussion, you know, that are, uh, other, other topics, other, um, or other construction or development types. So I deleted some of the rows, but all the columns are the same. And what's in each row is exactly what's in the table today. Uh, it is clear in this resort that multiple rows are used to clarify the meaning of different situations on property or buildings as necessary. Look at rows one through four. You know, if you look here, my, the one through four, they identify the differences, or not, of assisted living facilities, nursing homes, convalescent homes, extended care facilities, neighborhood group homes, residential treatment facilities. Well, to the layman's, those, those all look the same, kind of, but they have unique little differences associated with those. If you look at rows 11 through 13, they identify the differences between a bed and breakfast, a hotel motel, transient accommodations, or additional residential density. Are those the same? Are they different? They have unique differences. Rows 15 through 18, they identify the differences between an animal kennel, an animal shelter, pet grooming services, or veterinarian. Well, they each have differences, but they're similar, right? Rows 19 through 20 identify the differences between an adult daycare and a child care facility. Well, one's adults, one's... So if, if you, I don't know if I can have about another minute?
Not yet.
Okay.
When you do your next one, we'll talk about it, but I think that this basically is, is well laid out.
Okay.
And I think that was your intent.
If you, yes, look at the groupings.
Yeah, you're, you, it's grouped, it's, it's under, you know, I'm not saying there's this big change coming, but I'm saying it's very understandable. Thank you. Uh, petitions or requests.
Tony Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. "When I got home from the last city council meeting at 2:30 a.m., my husband accused me of having an affair."
Stop. Stop.
He's right. I am.
It was 3:00 a.m.
I'm in love with the town of Titusville. Fortunately, I was able to tune in the last 30 minutes of your meeting on the town's YouTube channel to show him the meeting was still happening. Making the city's workings visible and transparent to its citizens not only saved my marriage, but it is helpful to inform and instruct the population. It's to the government's advantage to include the governed in shaping the rules and conventions we are all compelled to live by.
Amen.
By now, everyone here knows I attend a lot of meetings, and being a professional archivist, I keep a lot of documents that prove my attendance at these meetings. Recently, two ordinances appeared as if from nowhere to hamper and impede the public input to civic activities, the trespass and limited speaking ordinances. In the midst of all the infrastructure problems in the Indian River Lagoon poisoning and legislation problems, council took the time to not address these issues, but debate just how much to limit the public participation in public meetings based on a compilation of similar town sizes around the state, none of which are in Brevard County, and also to limit our access to areas that can be public at one moment and arbitrarily closed the next by the city manager. Shame on diverging your attention from issues that really matter to punish one individual and thus the rest of us citizens. Look at the strategic planning process. You have the opportunity to improve the process significantly to ensure that citizens' feedback is incorporated into relevant annual performance measures, that the city manager's office is responsible for overseeing and updating quarterly. You spent all that time at that special meeting last week to set goals and objectives. Now spend some time and allow citizen input into where the real work gets done, setting the performance measurements and the evaluation criteria. One more minute, please. Perhaps you could encourage the city manager and the assistant city manager to meet with interested citizens to explain the process. I've been denied such a meeting. Maybe one of those eight workshops per year made available to public under Goal Five, Effective Governance, so that we may understand how department heads formulate their internal departmental performance measures based on council's direction. I'd like to attend that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, there's just so much here, I'll just leave it alone. Uh, go, um, next up, go ahead, Tom.
We don't pay her, but we should. Uh, Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. Uh, city council has spoken of their interest for two-way communication. This is very desirable. We all want this. Uh, during the recent workshop, I believe I heard this very thing from every council member, express their interest in having better, more productive two-way communication. However, that meeting and other important meetings are not video-recorded and poorly advertised. Sending a clear message that two-way communication maybe is not as important as we say. If you are interested in what your, our community has to say and contribute to the city's future, then there must be a shift in behavior, or the status quo will just continue. Actual constructive metrics need to be worked out to make this shift, otherwise we will be repeating, repeating this again. That our government does not listen and is not willing to make self, itself accountable to the citizens. The listing of agenda items for a meeting can make it very onerous for citizens to participate, as an example. When citizens take the time to make comment, if the agenda puts them later in the meeting, it is not conducive to their participation. So the appearance is that the agenda's manipulated to dissuade comment. Thank you.
Petitions or requests.
Uh, I'm gonna give you something different tonight. I'm not gonna ask you to do something except listen, 'cause I'm gonna give a testimony. First 11 years of my life, I lived on a river. A river, it was over a quarter mile wide, called the Canal River in West Virginia. And I lived, uh, lived not too far from a backwater, too, where water came in and so forth, it was freshwater come in. We didn't have any frogs, didn't have any toads, all the 11 years I was there. Didn't have any lizards. It was, it was devastation from the river. It's where, where I lived in West Virginia, we had several chemical plants. Dow Chemical, F M C, Union Carbide, and so forth. It was the Chemical Valley is where I lived. And the river killed everything. There was a few, there was just few carp in the river, there was no bass, there was no crappie in the canal, as far as I know. There was some crappie in the, in the backwater, and there was some bluegill there, but I don't know if there was any bluegill even in the river. So, uh, I say that because, uh, I wanted to go to someplace where we, we was, uh, there was some wildlife. Well, we moved. We moved about, uh, two miles upstream of the river, and there was frogs. There was frogs, there was owls, there was, um, uh, there was wildlife there. That's, that's going to the, uh, the headwater. In other words, when you go upstream, you go to the headwater. It was different. I was, I was shocked. I was shocked. Only, only, uh, uh, two miles away, much different, much different. So, here's what I see, what's happening here. And the, the bad thing I'm gonna say is, as far as I can see, we've already gone over the edge. When I came here in, uh, 1970, I'm watching a video, says, says that, uh, Brevard County is the, uh, the one county in all of the United States, except for those in Alaska, that has so many endangered species and, and, uh, threatened species and so forth. Brevard County. All of the counties in the United, continental United States, exclude Hawaii and Alaska. Now look at it now. The river's dead. River's dead. But something different. I go to the headwater, and it's dead there, too. It's dead. The headwater's dead, too. So what we're doing right now is, what I'm saying is, what we're doing is wrong in the river. When we just do, go for the nitrogen, phosphorus, and nutrients and stuff like that, we're missing things because we're killing things that aren't, I mean, right now, Titusville is an unusual place. We're between the St. John's River and a huge wetland, and then on, on the other side, we got the Merritt Island and so forth. I'm gonna ask for another minute.
I give you 30 seconds. Go.
Okay. Well, the thing is, is our headwater, it's dead. The moths are gone, the snails are gone, the slugs are gone, the amphibians are gone. I mean, there's a few amphibians, you can get a few frogs and so, but it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's, what I'm saying is, the dangerous thing is, as far as I can see, is my testimonies, we've already gone over the edge, and we need to do more, more than just clean the river with trying to clean up the nitrogen and phosphorus. Thank you.
Well said. Okay, uh, send, oh, wait, anymore consent agenda, anybody else? No. I didn't see you. You're quiet.
Non-agenda item.
You're quiet.
Casey, non, Maryland Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you to the city manager for adjusting the agenda item, um, to be more conducive so people could go home at a reasonable hour, and I hope that you also can go home at a reasonable hour tonight. Thank you.
Well, that's very nice. I must say, there's times when people say things and you don't communicate, you know, I think, I personally will speak for myself, I communicate as well as I possibly can. That doesn't mean people are gonna agree with me, and that doesn't mean that people are gonna go home and say, gosh, that was great, because we don't get a lot of what you just did, but I, uh, get a lot of that out in the streets. I just don't get it from a lot of people that come here, but I do appreciate that. I think, I like to think that, uh, I'll say T E, T C specifically, I like to think that it is a we thing, not a me thing. Other, I said before, there's nobody up here that doesn't want nicer, bigger trees where we can put them, but we also have that rock and hard place issue with affordable housing and, uh, you know, homelessness and all those things that go with it. But that being said, thank you very much. Do you want to go again? Anybody else petitions or requests? City manager.
Onto, uh, consent agenda item, city council. Are there any, uh, questions that you have of staff for consent agenda items A through G?
I see none.
Uh, council?
What, 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 member Nelson?
I did have one question. Uh, item C, the contract award, the continuing professional, professional consultant services. Um, my understanding is that we are approving those people for, on a, as people we want to bid on our projects.
That, what, what you're approving is, um, you already approved the... What you're approving is, you already approved the rank ordering of these particular vendors.
Right.
What you're approving tonight is the rate schedule that they have proposed. At the, at the meeting that you approved that, these firms, we said we will go back and negotiate the rate tables.
Right.
So that's what that is. Now, whenever we come up with a task order that the utility department or Public Works needs a work order done, it'll come back before council for approval and perhaps a budget amendment if it's not in working capital.
And at that point, all the firms will have the ability to bid on that item. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, city manager.
Counselor, are there any items?
So, it's not an IDIQ.
It's very similar.
So they don't bid on it, do they? Do they have costs that they submit to you initially?
They do.
And you use that for your.
Cost assessment.
So they actually don't come back and bid on each?
We will come back to you, city council, with the work order prior to approval.
Got you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I see none.
Counselor, are there any agenda items that you would like to pull for further discussion?
I see none.
City clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through G?
One card for five items.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item A through G. Consent agenda item 8A, approve Titusville Student Advisory Council Scholarship Policy Expenditure. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the scheduled rates for legal services for Lewis Longman Walker Law Firm. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the contract award continuing professional consultant services for Water Resources Utility Services and Public Works Projects. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the water service agreement for 6250 Horseshoe Avenue. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the purchase of a 10-inch pump for water reclamation facilities. Consent agenda item 8F, approve and assign Kane and Associates Continuing Consultant Contract and Work Order to Kimberly Horn. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the reallocation of ARPA funds for Water Resources projects.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comment at this time? I see none, call the card.
Stan Johnston?
Stan, Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm speaking tonight as a professional engineer, and I got a few items on your consent agenda.
Which ones can you say?
Pardon?
A, B, C, toss them out to me.
Well, if you're gonna interrupt, and next time.
I'm not interrupting, I'm asking what you're gonna talk about.
Please stop the clock the next time you do that, okay?
When you come up, you should say what you're gonna speak about.
That's why I don't have time, because you're still, you're still talking.
Are you gonna talk about these items here?
Okay, I'm gonna ask for another 15 seconds.
Go ahead, go ahead, stop the clock, I'll stop the clock. It's not uncommon for me to say to you, Stan, which, normally you'll come up and tell me. You didn't bother to say this time.
You didn't give me time.
Okay, now you have time. Can you tell me the ones you're gonna talk about?
Okay, I want you to listen, maybe take a pen and write it down, ready?
Okay, got it, always do.
Joe, you, too.
Always do.
Okay.
Can't say you'll stay on them, but I'll take them.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, let's start with, I'm gonna tell you what's one of the, 8B. N, neither.
Stop, stop, stop. Was that B or?
8B.
B as in boy.
Okay. 8C as in Charlie.
There you go.
It's neither. 8E, neither.
Why are you talking about it's neither?
8F, neither. Come on, write it down. 8G, opposed. Okay, so let's talk about some of these things.
Right, stop the clock.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so, so the, I do have concerns about this legal services, because I don't know how we're gonna do it, because I know, for example, of, the city has settled with spending at least a million dollars at a time, and I don't see it's in the budget, legal expenses. Never saw it in the budget. So I think that we need to have, if we're gonna do this hourly rate and so forth like that, is we need to see it in the budget, what it's for and when it happens and so forth, like for settlements and so forth. Seems like there's just too much secrecy there. So I'm not gonna oppose 8B, but I know of secrecy, and I don't like it. It's not reflected in our budget. It's not, I don't see it. 8, okay, let's go down to 8E is Water Resources. I'm not opposed to 8E, this new pump. I cannot imagine a pump costing $94,000, though. I mean, maybe I should be opposed for it, but, oh my golly, what kind of a pump are you gonna have? It's a 10-inch compressor-assisted solids handling pump. How in the world, I don't know. I mean, because even pumps for lift stations don't cost anything like that. So I don't know how it costs that much, I question it, but I'm not gonna oppose it. Then we go down to 8G, we're looking at giving Water Resources rescue funds. I find that's preposterous with what's going on with Water Resources, giving them more money. They don't even answer the phone. I called the new director, he's like, he's just the same as the Mr. Stauffer. Well, maybe he's a little bit worse. What he does is, I call him up and bam, he hangs up on me. Well, he can name Stan Johnston, bang. And it's similar to what's going on with the city, is that when I contact you guys about three times a week, and the city manager going to, through Virginia Baylock, please return my calls, and I mentioned about the things to call me back on, it's got a lot to do with Water Resources. Nobody calls me. So how in the world can I support giving them more money? In this case, what are these, from Water Resources? And guess what? I want Laura Lee to listen to this. Guess what's happening with that $550 billion? The $550 million is that the House Senate tax, what it's going through, it's giving enterprise funds, it's giving Water Resources money, it's giving them millions of dollars to do projects that should be on our taxes and enterprise funds. So I'm seeing millions of dollars being wasted. I see millions of dollars being wasted also with this, with this money being spent on additional treatment for the reclaimed water. What was it, started out 10 million, 11 million, 12 billion, 13 million, last I heard it was 13 and a half million dollars. Somebody has to pay for that. And then the thing is, is I don't think we have in our budget the materials and so forth that's gonna come after it's installed. There's gonna be, there's gonna be materials and so forth that somebody's gonna have to pay for. We're gonna get, are we gonna get more grants for that, whether it's alum or whatever it might be? I think it's poorly planned. Goodness sakes, I can't believe what happened. I mean, as an engineer, I'm told by this former director of Water Resources, he says, this water tire was essential to have, just gotta have it, it just, we couldn't do without it. And yet, we took it down, the one on South Street, and guess how much calculations we had for that? You were told that we'd had calculations. There were no calculations. I was told if I want the calculations, I think it's about $2,400, and then I can get the calculations, that we didn't need it. I don't know, I don't think y'all listened to me. In fact, is, is that, is that, is that I send you guys emails, and I know you're not listening to them, because some of them, they're telling other people, and told me too. I don't listen, I don't read anymore of your emails. But also, in Water Resources, we have these, I want, I want you to listen to this. Because we had citywide boil water alerts, and we can still have them. Citywide boil alerts. Who, who else in Brevard County or in Florida has citywide boil water alerts? I don't know of anybody. I don't know of anybody. I talked to, and you know, when we came, when Mr. Stauffer came up here explaining to you, he didn't say anything about Fort Long virus, nothing. But he did say something that you should have been listening to, and you haven't followed up to it. Shame on you, shame on you. He says it's gonna cost millions of dollars to correct it, and you haven't followed up on it, none of you. Shame on you. So what's going on here is, we're spending more, giving more money to Water Resources, and they are completely mismanaged by not only Mr. Stauffer, but our city manager. He has no idea what's going on. I'm not, I'm fed up with it. I think you've heard enough of that. Okay, I'll tell you some more. But I gave you, last time I was here, I gave you a little sheet, like this, like this. That's what I gave you. And obviously, you haven't looked at it, because it has a bunch of criticism that's been going on for years and years. And we have gag orders on our city employees. I just sent you another email today about the gag orders, and somebody said, what do you mean, we have gag orders? How Stan Johnston knows we have gag orders? What do you think I, how do I know it? When I've been contacting city officials and planning to, well, and our council members for years, they don't wanna talk to me. They don't. In fact, some of them say, hey, I don't even listen to your emails. When I go, when I went to Sandpoint Park and was watching the sewage, I had people come up and say, get out of here, get out of here. And I'm not even anywhere, as far as I can see, I'm nowhere near affecting construction, so they called the police on me, repeatedly. They did it to other people, too. I approached somebody from the laboratory, and they, they went away from me, went away from me, jumped in their truck and took off. I went to take pictures of some of the police, some of the people from a distance to identify them, because they wouldn't tell me what their names were. And so what they did, they put their hand out, they turned their face away and so forth. Employees in our Water Resources are under gag orders. How would you like to work for a city that is under gag orders? I'm serious. This is horrible. I wouldn't stand for it. If I was still working in the city of Titusville, I would get rid of this guy. So we even have this, I don't wanna go too much into it, you know, the sewage spray, and there's gag, there's definitely gag orders on that, but it's horrible. I mean, denial of sewage spills and so forth, it's absolutely nonsense. I'll be speaking tomorrow night at T E C. If you wanna come and watch me, I'm gonna tell you, tell T E C how horrible our city council and our city government has done to deny obvious and notorious sewage spills. As far as what I read, I'm sure there'll be some loopholes, what I read is what you guys are doing and what you're leading some guy, it's like a, what would you say, a team of dishonesty led by our city manager. A partnership of dishonesty, because it's not true. It's not true about these sewage spills, they did happen. I'll send you another email about that later, but I'll let it go at that. Thank you. You got a few seconds left, thank you.
Yeah, any other cards? All right, move forward. Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8G.
I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes. Consent agenda passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto item 9A, this is ordinance number 152023, amending Rule 5 of Section 2-26 of the Code of Ordinances, Rules of City Councils. So the city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 152023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Rule 5 of Section 2-26 of the Code of Ordinances, Rules of the City Council, by amending the procedures and time limits for public comment at council meetings, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
City council expressed its desire that the city council meetings be conducted in an orderly and efficient manner, while preserving the public's ability to provide relevant comments to propositions brought before council, consistent with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes. Council provided advisability to amend Section 2-26 of the Code of Ordinances to provide the public a maximum of three minutes to speak on consent agenda items, while allowing for additional speaking time in the event that the item is removed by city council for further discussion, and allowing for additional speaking time by a vote of city council.
Counsel, any comments? City clerk, cards.
Stuart Buchanan.
Good evening, mayor and city council, my name is Stuart Buchanan. I am a resident of the city of Titusville. My working mailing address is P O Box 1545, Titusville, Florida, 32781. I am so happy you have places on the agenda. I tried to address this about three years ago with the prior mayor. I have the opportunity and the pleasure to present to all the cities in this county, mainly for development projects or rezonies or variances, and also to the county, the county commission, I should say. Here, watching the procedure for your consent agenda, it's like slow torture. Having it hijacked by an individual, using the consent agenda to make personal attacks on staff, is unacceptable. It's just unacceptable. The negative impression that it gives on not only the running of the meetings, but on the residents themselves, making us look like buffoons, it's just, I'm so happy that you're addressing this. And the last time, I waited till 2:00 AM to speak on this item.
Yes, you did.
And one of the reasons that we had to wait till 2:00 AM.
Yes, you did.
Will now be fixed because of this. Mayor and city council, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and all the residents that aren't here, that didn't wanna wait till 2:00 AM at the last meeting, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card.
Tony Schifalo.
Unlike the gentleman who was just standing here, I think that it's really a shame to punish everybody, because there's one individual that chooses to abuse a situation. And the consent, the consent agenda is something that is put together in, I don't know how it works yet, I haven't been, I haven't been educated on that yet, but not having the opportunity to speak more than three minutes. You see how carefully we craft our speaking time, or maybe you don't. I spend all day honing down to three minutes on one topic, and then if there's several things that I want to address, now I'm limited to that same three minutes, that maybe, maybe one sentence per item if there's two or more items. I thought it was pretty fair and reasonable that if you had several consent agenda items that you wanted to speak to, you got an extended period of time. 10 minutes, I agree with this gentleman, was a little long and tedious, but I think that a compromise of perhaps five minutes would have been preferable to just cutting it back to three minutes, because three minutes is hardly adequate time to get even one point across often, because we do, a lot of the citizens, and I'm not saying that the one individual that this ordinance was passed against doesn't put in a lot of time on research, I would, I would say does quite a lot of research, matter of fact, too much so, even for those of us who love research. But to pass a time limit that is so restrictive, when it could have been five minutes, and I know y'all are very generous, but it is very demeaning to have to wait while you take a vote to give me 30 more seconds. So I just think, I don't expect you to change anything, because rarely does that happen when we get up and speak. Sometimes it does, and that's very encouraging, and I really applaud that, that you do listen to us. And I just think that five minutes on multiple consent agenda, consent agenda items would have been more preferable than just limiting it to three minutes, because three minutes is hardly enough time to talk anytime. Thank you.
Tony, hold still. First of all, you're very energetic, so sometimes it takes, you know, if I don't hear your voice, I can see your hands. But that being said, I would, I would say that this council is very patient, as matter of fact, even during the T E C. As a matter of fact, even during the, uh, T E C discussion, someone was close. I'm not cutting them off.
Yeah, you're good.
I'm not cutting them off.
Thank you.
If you are talking and you're on topic, big factor. You're on topic. I don't really do a whole lot of take a vote sometimes. It's just, okay, okay, let's go. Thirty seconds. Uh, gave Stan thirty extra seconds today. So that being said, I don't think, and, and if you go through the years, and this is my, I don't know, seventh, eighth, something like that. I don't think we've had five people, four people request to talk about more than one, and most don't talk. Consent agenda is a very basic thing.
Right.
So that being said, I, I feel that we're very fair up here. And if you're saying something, as Stan did earlier today, he was, he was on, he was on task. He was there. Give you thirty more seconds. I don't think that's ever going to be an issue. If somebody's really saying something, it needs to be said. It'll be said.
May I just say one more thing?
Yep, absolutely.
I, I, I totally appreciate what you're saying, and, and I think that includes all of this current council. I'm just afraid now it's going to be codified. And in the future, if it's not you all sitting up there, what's going to happen?
I, I don't see it as an issue. All right, thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, sir. The last card, Stan Johnston.
I have a handout that, uh,
Clock.
Before, and I, I know Mr. Buchanan.
Clock. Start, oh, he's not there yet.
Okay, here's the handout. I don't like Mr. Buchanan listening to what I have to say. I have many times come up here and saying, "I'm speaking to you and coming to you because you're not answering my emails, you're not answering my presentations, you won't return my phone calls." So you were advised recently by, uh, an attorney, Nikki, I believe her name was Nikki. She said, "Listen, you, what you need to do is you need to talk to people." And many times I've said, I've said here, I said, "The only reason I come here, up here and speaking, because you will not talk to me, you will not address me." And I'm saying, "It's your fault that I'm here." For example, spraying people with sewage. Mr. Buchanan, apparently he, he agrees with that, too. Just spray people with sewage. Spray people with sewage. Do I have an answer on this? The answer is, somebody in F D E P said it was a good idea. Now, I just told C R A, it's, it's complete nonsense from my, from my, from my expertise as a professional engineer. Now, if this Buchanan fellow says it's okay, that's not still okay. I'm a professional engineer, I'm an expert witness. You guys were fools and hypocrites to go ahead and allow this to happen for four months. Fools, hypocrites, stupid. It was stupid. And that, and when I call somebody stupid like, like, uh, this, this, our city manager, I mean it. And he doesn't, he doesn't respond to the emails to, about this and about anything. You guys are doing a bad job on some things, a lot of things, and that's why I'm here. And you're going to continue to hear it because all you're doing, when you pass it, all you're doing is taking seven minutes out of my time. What you, what we did a few years ago is they wanted, we knocked it from five minutes to three minutes. Then you, then it went from, from, uh, three minutes per item to ten minutes per item. That's not going to stop me. You guys need to fire somebody. A problem. You've got a big problem over here. It's not a, it's a, you call it a personal attack. This guy is, is spraying people. He says it's okay. He's lying. He's lying about the sewage spills and everything, and you guys are going along with it. You should never go along with his lies that he's promoting. The sewage spill that happened recently was real. It, and he denies it. It's a false report. We don't have, we'd never had any, any warning signs, nothing. Let's go ahead and paralyze another kid. What does he care? Mr. Buchanan, he knows everything. That's a personal attack right there. I disagree with it. Thank you.
Any other cards? Counsel, any comments? Member Nelson, want to make a motion?
Please. Move to approve ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, uh, rules of City Council.
I second the motion.
I have a motion from Member Nelson and a second from Member Herman, Mr. Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, City Manager.
Onto item nine B, which is, uh, single-family dwellings in open space and recreation zoning districts and wetland conservation areas overlay. This is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-three.
Ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending the conditional use requirement for single-family dwellings in the open space and recreation O R zoning district and wetland and conservation area W C A overlay district. Specifically amending Chapter twenty-eight zoning, Sections twenty-eight dash fifty-four zoning use table, twenty-eight dash eighty single-family dwellings detached, and twenty-eight dash three twenty-two open space and recreation O R. And by amending Chapter twenty-nine special districts and overlays, Section twenty-nine dash seventy-four conditional uses, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date and incorporation into the code.
On twenty-two February twenty twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to accept this ordinance as presented at seven zero. On ten January twenty twenty-three, City Council directed staff to prepare an ordinance amending the conditional use requirements for single-family homes in open space and recreation zoning districts and wetland and conservation area overlay. The ordinance proposes to keep, the, the ordinance proposes keeping the requirement for a conditional use permit if single-family dwellings is located inside a wetland and not, uh, require a C U P if the home is to be located outside of wetland in the O R zoning district. The ordinance meets the city council's direction. No changes are proposed to the setbacks or the zoning districts. And Brad's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, whenever, whenever, since this is our second reading, uh, whenever you, when it's ever as appropriate.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other, uh, counsel, any other comments? All right, call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
Although I'm opposed to this, I'm, I'm not clear on, on some items. Uh, I believe that there's been an error made, uh, in some of this wording. Uh, I believe it says ordinance five dash nineteen ninety-three, number cases for the, uh, O R zoning. I believe that's supposed to be fifty dash nineteen ninety-three. And, uh, uh, I'm not sure the best what, what to do in this case. But it looks like it's something that needs to be resolved. And although I, I put a card in saying I oppose it, I, uh, I'm not clear as to what it's going to achieve, partly because of the surveying. It, it's, the surveying, in other words, we have zoning that was based upon a wetland map or soils map, and yet people didn't know. People may not know what their zoning is until they get a survey. It seems, uh, it seems like it should have never been, been, happened. I want you to know that ordinance fifty dash nineteen ninety-three, uh, I had, my wife and I had property, and we didn't know we, our property was being rezoned because it was some, something in the newspaper. And so it was throughout the city of Titusville, they had administrative zoning. And, uh, and the, the council was told, "Got to do it, got to do it quickly or else you have opposition." So, um, we are, you are right now spending time on something that was done in the past that was not done right by the city. I don't know what you need to do to, to correct it, but, uh, it was a horrible thing that happened. Some people just lost their property completely. Completely, they lost it because they didn't know, and they, they just sold it for, for nothing because they, they had, uh, uh, tore their, tore their property up with, with how it was rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Donna Frogs? Donna? Oh, it's Diane. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I said it's a little early. You're going to be going home.
Diane Frog, fifty-eight twenty-five, Wendover Way, Titusville. And I am in agreement with the, having the two separated. Um, I just think they should be on two separate lines, um, as on the resort when she showed you on that table.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and, um, because the lack of clear wording and lack of, um, clear intention in the L D R Section twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table will likely lead to interpretation differences and confusion over time. Even though we all understand it now, someone looking at it ten years from now might not understand it if it's on one line with an L slash C. And if it's on two separate lines, it would be very clear, and there'll be no, and, uh, and, uh, no chance that somebody's going to look at it and say, "I don't understand." You know, so if, if it's on one line, each, each section, the single family dwelling detached, if wetlands are impacted, would be a C requiring a cup on one line. The second line would be single-family dwelling detached. If wetlands are not impacted, would be an L with limitations. If you put both of those on one line with a, with a C slash L or an L slash C, one of them could drop off somewhere down the road or something, and then there could be some confusion.
I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so if, if you could do that, I think that would be great. And then it's kind of a win-win for everybody, you know, for, for the rights, you know, whose property this is affecting and for all of us at Wendover. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Nothing? Okay, next card.
Sandra Klinger?
Sandra Klinger, twenty-six eighty Bobcat Trail. The policy, the city of Titusville adopted comprehensive plan and land development regulation policies that recognize wetlands and other environmentally sensitive lands as important and needing protection, both on a broad-scale protection planning process and through the permit review process that you conduct here at the city. And a lot of this broad-scale view is to recognize the importance of these lands, not just parcel by parcel, but in this larger context to the community at large. Not doing this results in tunnel vision where you get the inadvertent impact of, uh, piecemeal destruction and death by a thousand cuts to these properties. And O R zoning, the combination of low density, low development density, and increased scrutiny through the conditional use permit review and public hearing process is the approach the city, uh, adopted to try to avoid or reduce impacts to environmentally sensitive lands and address unique site characteristics and impacts on adjacent and nearby uses. The Land Development Regulation, Division four, Section thirty-four seventy-six, is where the city codified a twelve-point review criteria that must be met before issuance of a C U P. This co, code allows the city to enforce additional site-specific conditions that it finds during the review process. This is important to ensure you're not creating a nuisance to other properties. The change that's being proposed could be viewed as an additional incentive, um, for landowners to avoid impacting wetlands. They can avoid the C U P process and impact fees if they stay out of the wetlands. And this is if they are on a property that has both uplands and wetlands in the O R. This furthers, furthers the city's stated intent to protect wetlands and other environmentally sensitive lands and try to achieve no net loss. Personally, I don't think the change is necessary. Will the removal of a C U P review outside of wetlands result in added impacts to other environmentally sensitive lands or even the wetlands themselves by not adequately protecting the upland buffer? It could. Lastly, I'm also concerned about precedent of making a change based on the legislative process that you're acting under. But, uh, and also the added, uh, issues that T E C raised. It seemed like those things could all be rolled into one because they were addressing, uh, land development regulation changes, not comprehensive plan-wide changes. So it seems like those could be rolled in. But I, you know, understand wanting to start at the comp plan and then move to the L D R, too. So I'm kind of, I'm in the neither category. I don't have a problem with what's being proposed, uh, but I also don't think it's necessary. Thanks.
Yeah, good points. Good points. Next card?
Last card is Connie Milton.
I've got my handout, or one of them. Got a new one?
Yep.
This one's still pertinent, though? Okay. Come on, Member Cole, hurry up. You got it? I'm never very good at this. I'm glad, my Cole got in the deal with it. Okay, all right.
Everybody got theirs? Okay, Connie Milton, Wendover Way.
All right, real quick, before I even start the clock for you, don't stop the clock. Tell me what this one is.
That is an email that I had sent to all of y'all and to Mr. Parrish
Okay, okay.
back, uh, right after y'all gave the direction.
Yep, yep, yep.
And that was based on the direction that was given, uh, what we had sent as our take on the direction that was given.
Now start the clock. Thank you. I remember that. Thank you.
Okay. So as you can see on this one that I just handed out, the direction that we all walked away with was there was, there would be two separate lines on this, uh, land, uh, or use table, on the use table. And the first handout that I gave y'all previously, you can see at the top part of that legalized, legal spreadsheet, that's where the two, uh, lines would be. And there's a new row because now you're going to be identifying where there's an L. The single-family dwelling detached if wetlands are not impacted. The other one is single-family dwelling if wetlands are impacted. That would require the C U P. Now, another thing, and, and Mr. Parrish's submit to you does not separate the two. Also, in addition, on the second page of my handout I just gave you, that shows the, uh, Chapter twenty-eight, Division two, Section twenty-eight dash eighty. We believe that, uh, under standards for conditional uses, it should say in the red, "If wetlands are impacted." What Mr. Parrish has provided to you does not make that statement. So those are the two things we believe need to be added to this. Just so you, just a further discussion, um, twenty-eight dash two use table, if you put those two in, it will be very clear to the public. But if you look through that use table across the board, sorted differently, not sorted alphabetically, there's all kinds of places where there's clarification on, with different rows. I mean, there's a clarification between adult daycare versus a childcare facility. There's a clarification between a bakery versus a delicatessen versus an ice cream parlor. There's, uh, clarification sporting goods stores, all the different stores. There's sporting goods, convenience stores, furniture store, bicycle sales, bookstore, clothing and shoe stores, gift shops, grocery store, hardware store, jewelers, on and on, pet stores, travel agency. They're all a different line in that table. Why on earth would you not put, why would the city not want two rows in this table to ensure there is no confusion in the future? The city has ensured that that lack of confusion over and over again in other areas of this table by putting multiple rows. Uh, there's a copy center, printing and copying stores, graphic printing and copying services, photo shops, screen printing shops. Those are all individual rows in this table. I believe it's very, very pertinent to put two separate rows, one identified as, uh, single-family if wetlands are impacted, and the second row, single-family dwellings attached if wetlands are not impacted. And this is hopefully the win-win-win for all of us.
Well done. Well, well presented. Well presented. Member Stokel?
Okay, I'll start with my comment. I do have some concern about clarity, and I say that as we just had an item not too long ago where there was a big discussion on definition of open space and what counts. And so I, I, looking at this, I will say I am a little bit concerned about clarity. And so I can see this going And so I can see this going two different ways that would make me feel better. One, if we keep staff's proposal, I would like to add an asterisk because either way, we're doing something new. This is the only one that will have an L slash C, which will be new. And I would like to have like a, an asterisk next to it so it clarifies where you go. Because as it reads to me, I feel like somebody could argue, oh, I'm just going to read the one that has limitations, I meet that, and not even read the one below it. I, I could see that potentially happening. So I would like that to be clarified, where to go exactly and to read which portions. Also, and I'm on page six oh two, with the standards for permitted uses with limitations, I do like what Connie gave us. I would like to add the outside of wetlands to further clarify. Because as it reads right now, it just says, it doesn't mention the wetlands at all, and I would like to clarify that that will be outside. That's what I would want if we do staff. If we go with Connie's proposal with the two lines, I'm okay with that as well just because, again, either one, we're making a change. And if we do that, I would just like to, instead of, if, if wetlands are impacted, I, I think just for clarity, I would say if it's in wetlands would make me, or outside of wetlands, it seems more straight to the point. And then still with that clarification of outside of wetlands and then in wetlands, it would be hard to kind of, I feel like, argue that. That way, whichever one they're reading, it addresses the wetlands. That's my proposal.
And I would say, you've said everything I kind of want to say. I think that, I like the clarification on wetlands. Of all the things I heard, and I think there was some, some, well, good thought out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
If, I can wait till after discussion, but I do have a comment about.
No, no, I'd like to hear your comment, because I was getting ready to say, is there anything you want to add?
So as far as adding a second row to the use table, we completely disagree with that. It's a completely misinterpretation of how to use this use table. Back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, the city went through a lot of effort to try and consolidate a variety of different uses throughout the code. Like several uses were identified at the same, but different definitions of them throughout the code. It's very confusing. This, we decided to go this route with your, with the council's permission at the time to consolidate uses into this matrix. So you have one single use per row based on that type of use, not based on its location. That's different, that's a standard. The definition of the use is specific to that particular row. So single family as one row in this matrix makes the most sense to us. And each and individual use here is individually defined separately as well. Having a second row on here will be actually more confusing because when you look at the key, it says certain uses that are prohibited aren't even identified in a particular cell. I think that would be more confusing. The other thing, too, is when to find out the specific conditions of a particular use, if there are conditions or limitations or a requirement for conditional use permit. That use, you just go to the very right, the very final row, or column, rather, of this matrix, and it tells you what section to go to to find the specific conditions or limitations of that use. Each one of these have that. So for example, single family in this particular ordinance, it refers you to section twenty-eight dash eighty, which is in this ordinance of yours. And we just amended the conditions or limitations for single family use there. Now, we can make clarifications in that section, that I can understand. We need to make clarifications there. But as far as a second row or in this use table, I think that's a real mistake.
And, and I would certainly defer to you, staff, who's put the time in and, and done what you've done. And I'm with that. If there's any way to identify wetlands in anything we do, I, I think that would be awesome. I'm not going to ask you to do something and twist and do a, a, a somersault in something you just can't get done or don't think is practical. That's why you're there.
I just think it'll be more confusing. I don't, I don't think it's.
And, and that's.
That's gonna.
That's important to me. That's important to me. If you think that, I'm not going to, I'm not doing it. I'm not in there every day. And I'm going to lean on you to tell me what's best. So with that, Member Nelson.
So my question is, how, do you have a comment about putting in single family dwelling if wetlands are impacted?
So in, in section twenty-eight dash eighty, you see that table there, the summary table. So in each one of these, where in that use table refers you to the particular conditions, like in this section, in this case, twenty-eight dash eighty. And you look at that, I'm looking at page six oh two of your packet. Each one of these uses has that summary table of where these uses are permitted now. So it's another use table. You can see all the uses where, or the zoning districts where single family is also located and permitted. So we can say, you can add the, for limitations of a single-family home in the OR zoning district, we can add the word outside of a wetland or maybe say in the upland, however that you want, want to put in there to clarify that that is a limited, limited use for a single-family home in the OR zoning district that does not require a conditional use permit. Further down under paragraph D, we've got in that language right now, inside the OR zoning district, a single-family home in the wetland would require a conditional use permit. I mean, it's pretty clear to me when I read it, but if we want to have additional language in here in the, in paragraph C three, we can certainly do that.
Something to the effect of, um, outside of the wetlands.
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
Yeah. That would work.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so based on that discussion, I feel like the best course of action would be, and where I feel like I would feel comfortable. Brad, thank you for clarifying that. And it does make me feel better, and I forgot about this last column on here where it does refer you to twenty-eight dash eighty. So in C, I would say under three, after the zoning district, comma, outside of wetlands, comma, and then continue on, single family dwellings may. And so that one specifically with limitations, you can do it as long as it's outside of the wetlands. And then D, I like how you added in wetlands. So that would be my only change, is just adding outside of wetlands in C three. And I would, I'm happy with it.
Well, I would ask staff, by changing three, because that's really just talking about density, not whether you need a CUP or a limitation. So if you just add in the OR zoning district outside of wetlands, you can have a density of one to five. That, now you're talking about, just in relation to your density. That, I don't think that would be appropriate because it sounds like you're making a condition related to density of one per five based on wetlands. And the whole comment is whether or not you're required to have a CUP hearing or not.
I could see that.
That's my problem, is now we created that, that issue.
So maybe we leave it alone. Maybe we leave it alone. I thought we had some chances to perhaps make it more clear.
Yeah.
But listening to Brad, I don't want to, I don't want to get into his, his soup and, and let him stir that pot, that's his. And if he understands it the best and can explain it the best, and as city attorney said, if we go another direction, now we're maybe not even saying what we're trying to say. So maybe we leave it alone and find out if there's more trouble down the road. But right now, if it's adequate and you like it, we go with it.
I just want to refer you to page six oh three. That's section twenty-eight dash three-two-two of the code. Page six oh three of your packet. You'll see that open space and recreation zoning district, these are the development standards in that zoning district. It even defines or states there that the maximum density is one unit per five acres. So any residential unit in that zoning district is maxed to five units. So in the previous page, page sixty-two of your packet, where it talks about limitations of a single family, it's a, we got a redundant limitation in there. So we had one initial draft that we were about to present to you that didn't even include a statement of density inside the limitations. And I actually was going to put it down as permitted. But because you requested at your last meeting that you wanted that specific limitation, we've kept it there. But I just want to point out that it's already addressed in the zoning district as well. So for clarity, I can understand having several places, the same regulations, so that just no one misses something. But sometimes that can create issues, too.
Correct, and you, you made some very good points and clarified a few things for me.
Last thing, too, there was a statement about why we put the, the term or the, the letters L slash C. It was basically because of your request. We have other uses here inside the use matrix that are identified as limited. But when you look at the, the limited conditions or the conditions that are related to that limited use, sometimes it will call out, depending on what's happening, that you'll have to go through a conditional use permit, even inside those conditions. But in the main use table, it calls it out right from the start as a limited use. So we have instances like that. But because of this specific request of yours to do this ordinance, we decided to do this unique change here where we've added the letter L slash C. So it's very clear that there is a possibility from the, in the use table, when you first look to see where this use is and what's permitted, that there would be a conditional use permit. But generally, we were about to start with just an L in that case. So we have other instances with it. I, I'm sorry, go back, we don't have any other examples of a use that's identified with an L slash C. So, but because of your request of this particular unique ordinance, we decided to do it that way.
Sounds like because of our request, we've already messed it up once. Member Stokoe?
I was just gonna say, if we are going to approve this, I still, I, I still feel like adding outside of wetlands, to me, it clarifies. I don't see how that would be an issue, even though we are talking about density in that line because we say in wetlands, talking about density in the line right after it. So I'm really not sure how that would be an issue. I think it just clarifies for me.
Oh, I'm, I'm up for clarification, but I don't want to get analysis with analysis either.
Exactly.
If he's struggling with that and it just doesn't work out for him.
I don't think Brad's struggling, though. I don't think Brad's struggling. I think city attorney might be struggling, but I don't, I feel like it's fine. That's my recommendation.
Member, you just became a member, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Parrish, anything else you want to add there? If you're struggling with it, make sure you continue to speak and we'll move forward.
Oh, I'm, I'm satisfied, I'm, I'm okay with the change in chap, in section twenty-eight dash eighty, paragraph C three, to add a statement in there that this is specific to, a limited use is specific to a single-family home in the OR zoning district outside the wetland.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I feel good about.
Because I, I, what Richard brought up before, I think is already resolved by the fact that the zoning district itself has that limit, that density requirement. So we'd apply it regardless if there's a wetland there or not. We'd look at the zoning district itself.
Well, then can I get a motion? Can we move forward? I think we've talked it out. Member Nelson?
I have my glasses on. Move to approve ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two-three, single family dwellings in open space and recreation zoning district.
Second.
With the addition.
I was gonna say, are we not?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, with the language set out by Member Stokoe.
Yeah, outside of wetlands. I think Brad, you got that correct.
I wrote it down and got to say it.
I'm just sitting there waiting for the rest of it. Okay, perfect. All right, Member Nelson has a motion, Member Cole has a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto item ten A, which is a first reading for small-scale comprehensive plan amendment number five, twenty-two. It involves two ordinances, the ordinance number seventeen, twenty-three, and ordinance number eighteen, twenty-three. City attorney will read these two ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number seventeen, twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty-nine-eight-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on a three-point-three-one-plus-or-minus-acre portion of property located southeast of Interstate ninety-five and State Road four oh six, Garden Street interchange, having Bovard County parcel ID number twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash AT dash one dash fourteen and twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash AT dash sixteen dash one from conservation future land use designation to commercial high-intensity future land use designation, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number eighteen, twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty-seven dash nineteen-ninety-seven of the city of Titusville by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the open space and recreation OR zoning district to the regional commercial RC zoning district on three-point-three-one-plus-or-minus-acre portion of property located southeast of Interstate ninety-five and State Road four oh six, Garden Street interchange, Titusville, Florida, Bovard County parcel ID number twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash AT dash one dash fourteen and twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash AT dash sixteen dash one and providing for an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be heard by city council on twenty-eight March twenty-two-three at six-thirty. The Plan and Zoning Commission considered both the land use change and the rezone, approved both seven-zero, and there are specific items within their recommendations. And again, this is no vote tonight.
Council, anything you want to add to ten A? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, as I understand this, this is to make a roadway, a place to, where you can build a road that they can get access to the, some more land? Is that correct?
That was the applicant's statement, yes. They're trying to, I guess this water body and wetlands are located in an area that will prevent them from being able to access the back of the property, including an area, another piece of property behind it. And so this land use amendment will provide them some flexibility, from what we understand.
Okay. Anything else from council? Call the cards, please.
Kim Rosanka.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, Kim Rosanka, Lacy Leisler, Rosanka Rockledge, Florida, here on behalf of Greg Nelson. This is first reading. I don't have a large presentation, but I'm here in case questions come up from the public or from you. This is one small parcel of two acres, another side parcel of about nine acres, and then twenty-eight acres to the south. And the way this wetland, non-connected wetland is placed, you can't even access the commercial property to the west of, a commercial property that has a house on it. So it's somewhat complicated, and I'll have a much more in-depth presentation.
And it's a total of, what, twenty-eight, approximately twenty-eight acres?
Twenty acres east to the south and a little over eleven acres on the north. So you've, you've got commercial property except for this three-point-three-one-acre lake slash wetland that was an old burrow pit from the fifties and sixties. So we're just trying to make the commercial land functional and the residential land behind it also accessible.
Tell me about the burrow pit. Is it still functionable as a water retainer?
It's, it, it retains water, yes. But right now, and, and this is a Rodney Honeycutt question, it will actually help the aquifer when this is filled in partially or completely because then the water will stay in the land. I don't quite understand it, but Rodney.
No, you're absolutely right. I'm asking you that question, I should have got another angle. But that's the only concern that I've heard.
And, and it's, it's also, it's, it's, it's not a connected wetland. It's a solitary wetland that actually became a wetland because it was a lake.
Okay.
John Shepherd will explain all that as well.
Um, Member Stokoe?
Yes, okay, so just to clarify, I'm looking at the map to, so it looks like there's commercial, and then I see the, like, island of wetlands, and then you have the low-density residential, correct?
Yes, to, to the south, and that is staying low-density residential. It's not part of this application, but it's an explanation as to why this reasoning is necessary because the way that lake is laid out, you can't get to the south.
That's what I was wondering, how do people get there right now?
You, it's, it's just vacant residential land.
Okay, so it's zoned that way, but you can't.
There's no intent to change that.
And that's, is that part of the twenty-eight acres or no?
Everything to the south is twenty-eight. This parcel up here, the two acres, is a little over eleven acres, almost twelve acres.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions for council, from council? Yeah, I think overall, there's just a couple of things, and I think that the next meeting would be the one to clarify those. And Rodney will probably be here to answer a couple of questions.
Rodney will be here, and John Shepherd from Atlantic Environmental will be here as well.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other cards?
Laura Lee Thompson.
I've had a lot of practice lately. Laura Lee Thompson, thirty-five fifty Irwin Avenue, MEMS. And I, I'm not here, I, I don't, I'm not opposed, you know, I don't have any opposition to this use of this property, but what I, I, you know, I'm, I just want to grandstand one more time about how. how we are losing wetlands, you know, we're losing our open space and conservation area, and we need to figure out a mechanism to keep the mitigation for wetlands going outside of our city limits. And Tony very eloquently painted the picture of the opportunity that we have in the large forested wetlands, you know, that it's a chain of wetlands that literally goes from south of Highway 50 to north of, north of 46. And there's no other community in Bovard County that has anything like that. There's probably very few communities in the entire state that have such a resource, you know, that, that could be available to the public. So there's money available from the Infrastructure Act, there's money available from the Inflation Reduction Act. The city of DeBury just purchased 170-acre Alexander Island for $3.5 million, in part using pandemic relief funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. So there's all kinds of money. We, we just have to figure out how to get our hands on it. So, you know, we, we're asking for an arborist. Well, this is going to take a lot of work, too. We don't have staff that can work on it, but there needs to be some kind of a leader, you know, on, on, on our city staff that can take, take the, you know, take this and run with it. So maybe we could create a position that would be like part arborist and part leader to get this wetlands idea going, and we could fund it out of the, the tree destruction fund that, that I just heard has like $475,000 in it, something like that. And, and, and so we could use some of that money and, and create this position. But nobody on staff is going to take the leadership to try to make this happen. We have to work with the water management district, we have to chase money, and, and there, there, there's nobody that has time to do that. And citizens don't have the expertise to do that. So I, I think that we could create a position that would make everybody happy and, and, and chase this dream of creating a huge green space in the middle of town so that we could use it for stormwater retention and quit running fresh water into the northern, into the Indian River. Everybody would win. So like I said, I'm, I'm not saying that this is a, a bad idea for this land use change. I just hate to see yet another wetland going to be mitigated out of Titusville, and we, and we should be looking at this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Last card is Dan Johnston.
Thank you. That's the first reading, right? Yep. Anything else from counsel? City manager.
Onto item 10B, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment number six, 2022, Palmetto Complex. Involves two ordinances, ordinance number 19, 2023, and ordinance 2023. The city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 19, 2023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60 dash 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately .54 plus or minus acres of property located on Palmetto Street, having Bovard County parcel ID number 22 dash 35 dash 04 dash 00 dash 53, and 22 dash 35 dash 04 dash 00 dash 50, from low-density residential future land use designation to medium-density residential future land use designation, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 20, 2023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five dash 1993 of the city of Titusville by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by changing the single-family medium-density R1B zoning district to the multifamily medium-density residential R2 zoning district on approximately .54 plus minus acres of property located on Palmetto Street, Titusville, Florida, Bovard County parcel ID number 22 dash 35 dash 04 dash 00 dash 53, and 22 dash 35 dash 04 dash 00 dash 50, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be heard by city council on 28 March, 2023, at 6:30. The planning and zoning commission, acting as your local planning agency, consider this request on 8 March, 2023, and approve both the land use and the rezoning seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any comments? Questions or comments? I see none. City clerk, call the cards.
We had one from Laura Lee, but she left, and then Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I'm, this is a quasi-judicial issue, so I want you to.
It will be, meaning that it's, it's a first reading right now?
No, it says, it's, it's, it's a quasi-judicial item, it says right now. Isn't that correct?
The land use is legislative, the zoning is quasi-judicial, but this is the first reading. We will vote at the next meeting. There will be a second reading, public hearing vote at the next meeting.
Is this quasi-judicial right now?
This is not the public hearing. This is the first reading.
Oh, okay.
Public hearing will be.
This is not the public hearing. Okay, anyhow, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not quasi-judicial.
Your time out.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for clarification, Richard. The, I'm not against this, but I, but when they use the word comprehensive plan, is that what I, I submitted this to you guys, and this has been going on for years, and the fact is, for over 10 years, is that we've got dams in the city of Titusville, and I told you about it, is, is that the dams don't have, designed to what they flood. How in the world is that, how is that world continues? I mean, there's nonsense in that. I mean, you watch westerns and so forth, you don't put dams in property and, dams and not show what they flood. So anyhow, it's still, it's still continues for over 10 years. And FEMA problems, this been continuing for over 10 years also. In other words, we got, our records are missing. Records are missing, and the city won't get them back. Area of critical concern, area of critical concern is, is established in about 1986. It's changed, it's changed considerably, and yet no update on it. And these, these are what? What am I talking about? Y'all probably lost it already. Comprehensive plan. It's all nonsense. A lot of it's nonsense. It's not all nonsense, but what we have is negligence and violation of laws and so forth. The well field on State Road, that's south of State Road 50. It's not performing like that. But why do we, why do we have the area of critical concern like that about that, around that well field doesn't work? So we have a failure in the stormwater management plan. It's just nonsense. Nonsense, like I tell you about when these, along I-95, where it's, all you see is, is, you don't even see them. You can't even find, you can't find the culverts, because they're all overgrown. So anyhow, and then you got the resilient report, that's nonsense also. So also, just one more thing, and that's 50 dash 1993, I believe that's incorrect. It says 5 dash 1993, I believe it's supposed to be 50 dash 1993. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, any more cards? Thank you very much. City manager.
Any more discussion or anything? You guys good?
We're good.
Okay. Our next item is 11A, which is the Community Development Block Grant, CBPG and Home Investment Partnership Program, Home Grant Funding Recommendations. At a special meeting on 17 January, 2023, city council received the Neighborhood Services Department's annual report for the FY 2022 CBPG and Home Grants. Additionally, at the same meeting, city council heard from agencies that responded to the department's FY 24 requests for proposals. The Neighborhood Services Department has completed the evaluations of the RFPs that were received, and Neighborhood Services Director has recommended the following for the 2023-24. It's in your packet. I won't read all of these. Should you have questions, Terry is available to answer these questions for the Public Services Grant, the Neighborhood Services, the Neighborhood Revitalization Activities, as well as the Home Grants.
Very good. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys coming to two meetings in a row to get your moment in the sun. Anything you guys want to say, or just questions?
Which button? There we go. I just wanted, I'm sure you probably noticed, but I just wanted to highlight that this year, the CBPG funds went down. We were expecting to stay level or go up, and that's only because there's more and more cities becoming entitlements with HUDs, so they're having to spread the monies amongst more cities, and that's the only reason it went down.
Okay. How do you feel about our disbursement? I mean, did you feel like we, where do you felt like we were short? What did we, what's the bridge you're trying to build? I mean, what's the weakest area? Is there something like, gosh, I wish I could have done this, this was in the plan, and we didn't get the money?
Definitely Public Services, but that's not because of a, the lack of funding, it's because of a regulation that limits us to 15% of the grant.
Those regulations. Get you every time. Well, before I even move on to everybody else, I certainly want to say what a great job you do down there, and hear your name, and the Harry Timor Center on a regular basis, and 92% of the time, it's really, really good, because there is no 100%, right, city manager? So, no, but the difference you guys make down there in various capacities can't be put into words. There, you know, I think the perfect award would be the unsung hero award for you and the entire building. I appreciate you guys greatly.
Thank you for that. We have great partners in the community helping us.
And it really is, an unsung hero thing, you're, you're, for many times, and if I'm down there, and city manager and I are down there for an event, you guys are running crazy, it's like there is no event there, you're still running same old, same old. If I go to a meeting down there in the cafeteria area, I, you guys can barely nod at me, how you doing? That's it, but very appreciated. So I wanted to get that in. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or anything like that? Member Nelson?
I did have a question. You've got 176,000 set aside for beautification and infrastructure in the neighborhood revitalization area. Do we know what that's going to be used for?
We don't know the details yet. We'll be getting back with the community. I've reached out to them so that we can talk about what year two looks like. We have the neighborhood revitalization plan that council approved, so we'll follow that plan, but we want to set, you know, priorities, what they would like to see done in year two versus year five. Okay. Thank you.
And I, again, to follow on the mayor's, that neighborhood revitalization strategy was very time-consuming to put together. It had to be approved by outside agencies and then returned to us, so great work by this team to, to focus some of our energy into that area.
And again, that word, just kind of hit me, the word unsung, because most of us, I mean, we, I don't know exactly everything you're doing, like that right there. You guys worked very, very hard on that, and it's not like we can say, hey, great, come on up here, let's, it's just, you got to have in your heart to do this. And, and you're kind of like coaching and education to some degree. You're not in it to get rich and get a four-story building and all that, you're not. You're in it to make a difference in people's lives. And every time I go by that building, I can tell you that there are people getting, having a difference made in their life. And I'll, I could leave it at that, or I could keep going, but there's plenty, plenty of stories. City, Vice Mayor, get ready to say something. I could tell, couldn't I?
I was, I wasn't here, Terry, for your presentation, and I know that they, they did well. I saw that one was eliminated, and didn't get to, get to participate, and, and I know that you were fair in, in, in that. I'm sad that the money is, is not more allocated toward the housing people, you know, but it's.
Well, this portion may not be, but we have other grants that were.
Yeah, I know you, and I, and I've talked to you recently about that, but I just wanted to see that, but thank you, and I know that you, it's a hard task. Thank you.
Before I call cards, anything you want to add? Are you good? Okay. City clerk, call card.
One card, Stan Johnston.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Keep up the good, good work. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. We need to make a motion to approve and move forward. Member Nelson.
Move to approve Community Development Block Grant and Home Grant Funding Recommendations in the amount of $310,501 for CBPG, and projected $139,014.85 for home.
Second motion.
Member Nelson with the motion, Member Cole with the second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Sokol?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Thank you, and thank you for being our representatives and making a difference in our people's lives. Thank you so much.
And on to the urban tree canopy assessment, item 11B. Oh, sorry.
Wait, that was fun, let's do that again.
No new business and petitions and requests.
Petitions and requests, take two. Nothing you want to say? You sat here too long, let's say something. Okay, me too. Okay, with that, we move to.
Mayor and council reports, and Mayor, you do have an action on volume.
I do, and thank you for reminding me. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure I can even read my writing, but I need counsel, like we did previously, except they've only got one, I need an approval for a proclamation, and this proclamation is for the American Red Cross, and in order to present it here, I need to have it approved by the council. So can someone just make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have one card, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Just a proclamation for the American Red Cross. Sorry?
We, yes, if you're gonna have an approval on an item, we have a card.
I'm sorry?
We have a card.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get to it in a minute. All right, I, I still want to have the motion made, and then get it all behind me, and then we'll talk about the card.
I'll make the motion to have a proclamation for the American Red Cross.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Go, go. Red Cross, we good? I thought we'd be good with the Red Cross. That's, that's a hard one to argue with. Okay, so I have, so basically, we're just saying, now, all those in favor, say yes? Opposed? Motion carries, we can do the proclamation for the American Red Cross. Perfect, okay. Let me go this way. Member Cole?
Yes, at our meeting on Tuesday night, I, I spoke to getting us the information out to the, to our constituents about what is happening in Titusville. Well, I've since had the opportunity to work with our city manager, and I don't think that there's any question that any person within the city of Titusville could ask. If they didn't, if they went to our website, the answer would be there. They have, there is so much information on that, there's more information than you could ever want. So I just want to say to Scott, I really appreciate your people putting that together, because it's, it's a, it's a wealth of information there. So if you wanted to know if your street was going to be paved this year or next year, you can go on the website and find out. Any questions you can ask, basically, you can find on our Titusville website, which is a great tool specifically for me as a new council member, but for anybody in the city to go to and, and recognize the kinds of things that we're doing and the projects that we're doing.
Member Nelson?
It is only 10:15, and I'm delighted.
We were 10 minutes away from taking a vote to continue.
Let me say, I have nothing to say, other than I think God, it is not 3 o'clock in the morning.
Woo, that was, I remember what I kept saying, 1:30, you guys, 1:30, I'm telling you. Anyway, I just want to reiterate, first of all, the help that Parrish has done, Parrish Medical Center has done in so many ways, and it's fresh in my head, because I just was at and spoke at the football cheer clinic that was based on Smile From Within, and JT Hassel, who has, and I know he doesn't mind me sharing, because he shared it with us at Rotary, has had some anxiety issues in his life, and he's an NFL player. So that just means anybody can have anxiety issues, and he doesn't mind telling you that. So when you get these five or six NFL players out there helping run a football camp. when you get these five or six NFL players out there helping run a football camp and, uh, NFL New England Patriot, um, cheerleader, running a cheer camp, that goes a long way. But the whole message was, and my message based on what they, you know, the program was, you know, uh, first of all, I was, you know, basically believe in yourself, be yourself, and smile within yourself. And I love that saying, the smile within yourself. And as I was writing my words, it really hit me that, you know, sometimes you just gotta, gotta be able to find a reason to smile within yourself. And I appreciate those folks, JT Hassel and the gang and his team, focusing on mental health with those youth over at Gibson. And I was proud to be a part of that. So I'll leave it at that. There's lots of things we can talk about, but it's almost 10:30, and, uh, I'm just proud of that. And I'm proud that parish was, again, another thing that if they didn't come through, we wouldn't have had, had the ability to do that. Member Nelson?
And can I add a thank, big thank you to parish? Um, they are allowing the Boys and Girls Club again to use the pool on Highway 50.
For nonstop.
So there's going to be a large group of kids that know how to swim. And actually, I have a girlfriend that can't swim, so we may have to throw her in there, too.
Careful about the liability. Anyway, uh, vice mayor?
Thank you. You are here.
He was sitting there like a big cowboy.
Yes. Uh, the, uh, the Arbor House, I think is, what, what is it called? Arbor House? Where we went to the veteran thing with the-
Addington Place?
Addington Place. Uh, that was, that was very nice. Uh, 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 left Friday before last. Uh, it was wonderful to see, you know, um, uh, the veterans being honored, uh, for their, for their service. And, uh, it, it was just, just a very good ceremony. And I represented the mayor out there, and then I left there and went to the high school. And it was, it's always a pleasure to, uh, you know, for the kids, especially, and I'm, I'm speaking as a pastor of a church on this one, to see the members, the young kids of the church run up to you, uh, at school, and the principals, uh, uh, that was, that was very heartwarming, and it was a very special, special moment with that, uh, uh, at that particular time. And last night, again, I was down with, uh, our star.
She's a star all over the place.
Yeah, Dr. Starkle. And Sarah was, uh, on, on, on point. Uh, she gave her report. All details was in order. Uh, that's why, uh, you know, I was proud of you to, to be sat there to support you. Uh, and, uh, the food, little skimpy, but it was good. It was, it was a little skimpy.
But she eats more than us.
Hey, I did have someone bring me-
That's kind of my, my day, but the food was good. It was very-
And let me piggyback on that because it's a perfect time. I, too, was at the Titusville High School event, and, um, because of that, um, and some other things, I have called on the vice mayor to speak when I needed him to speak. And it's come in very handy that he's a preacher, and sometimes it comes in handy that he's a veteran. Um, and I don't mind, you know, asking him, I won't say sending him, come send you out to go do something, but I don't mind asking him to go cover for me at all. He's, when he can, he's going to say yes. And I appreciate that. So I think we've become a really good tag team because I'm going to tell you something. Uh, man, the speaking times, um, are more and more. Part of it is I think I've been very accessible, and people are getting words. So, hey, let's have the mayor come talk. When in doubt, call the mayor, and he'll come. And it's starting to can wear you out. And, um, and I, um, even just the preparation sometimes, or just in the back of your head, oh, you know, I've got to go to, I've got to speak there, you know. So that being said, uh, vice mayor has been very, very helpful in that way. And I think that we are representing the city very well. And, and I can't, I don't think I ever say no. Every now and then I might say, you know, to Ms. Virginia, uh, can you get with the vice mayor on that? And if he can't do it, then I'll, I'll try to get over there. Um, but in some cases- Well, we, we absolutely can, and, uh, we certainly will, but that hasn't come that low, except every now and then I understand, remember Cole is there before the vice mayor, so we'll work. So, so anyway, thank you very much. And, and, and I appreciate, you know, again, I think that we have, we all work together on this, and where needed, we'll be there. Member Stokel?
Yep. Vice mayor, the more you come, you'll establish friends that will give you their extra rolls if they're on a diet, and so you get extra food. Little, little, little tip. So, uh, mine will be relatively short. I did want to just keep some things on your radar. Session has started up in Tallahassee, and there are several bills that the league is watching and advocating for. A few that I'm particularly watching and concerned about are, I mentioned it to you before, financial disclosures. They're wanting, um, anyone that's running for local office here to fill out the same paperwork that you have to do to run for house, which is Form 6. And right now, we do Form 1. So may want to look into that. Um, sovereign immunity, they're wanting to raise the cap on that, which could impact our budget, um, depending if that gets passed or not. And it's challenging because the more, like, I try to talk to people and people at the state level, I feel like they're trying to help. Um, I, I know. They're trying to help make sure that cities are doing what they're supposed to be doing and have that oversight. I feel like they just don't really know and understand how that's actually implemented. Um, there's one that's particularly, she's, she's hoping to solve an issue, um, other issues by the sovereign immunity bill specifically. And so it's just challenging trying to navigate that and talking to individuals at the state level, our concerns at the local level. Um, there's also issues regarding utilities that could impact us financially as well that I'm watching, um, particularly in regard to solid waste and the water department. And then, um, I believe our city attorney has mentioned this to us maybe individually. The league is also watching, uh, the legislation regarding that case in Jupiter, where if you table an item or an ordinance, we may have to re-advertise. So we're watching that very carefully, um, to see what happens as well. So I will continue to keep you posted as I know more.
What about the, um, I've heard more about that, that, uh, to run at the local level, you would need to declare Republican or Democrat?
No, thanks for bringing that up. That is, that has been, um, filed, but it, at this time, there doesn't appear to be any movement. So that's why I didn't bring that one up, but it has been filed. Um, but I will, you better believe that if I see that painting something, I will-
Legislative cable shows, and they talked about it. And it sounded like, if you just heard that, it sounded like that there was a lot of interest in it, but perhaps not.
If you are, if you are interested in it, I will say our state rep actually filed the bill, so Chase Tremont. Um, so if you want to reach out to him, he's our state rep for half of Titusville and then up to Port Orange area. Um, so I would probably reach out to him and just say, hey, we saw you filed this. What, what are you hoping to accomplish if you're for it or against it? Um, but right now, there's just not much movement, so I haven't. That one's not on the radar yet.
I don't know this young man. And I will ask this, and you don't have to answer, but does he, does he spend time in Titusville?
Yes.
Where's he, where, where do you find him? Because I'd like, I'm surprised I have never seen him.
I don't know about like, right now, he's in session. So-
I get that.
Yes, yes. But no, like he's, and I know him because we met actually when I first got on council.
I am not you with all those fancy people.
I, no, no. But he has mentioned to me that when, once session's out, um, he would like to like go around and know the city more. So if you-
Does he have an office in Titusville?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, just curious. No worries.
Yep.
City manager?
I have no action items. I have several informational items for your consideration, mostly dates of upcoming events. And, uh, as, on a side note, um, you talked about the utility franchises. Um, the Public Utilities Commission did approve a rate increase for Florida Power and Light as well as Duke Energy. So your electric bill's going to go up about 8%.
And that would be your fault, or?
I'm just letting, letting you know.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. Well, I, I didn't want to say it too loud, but obviously there'll be some people who call city hall and say, why did my electric bill go up?
Yeah. And it's a, it's as a result of hurricane restoration.
Yeah, I, 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 I get it. Everything else is going up. Why wouldn't it? City attorney? Uh, city manager, can we wait four minutes so we can vote to continue, or? Sure. All right. Great meeting. I thought we got a lot done. I appreciate you guys. Meeting adjourned.